We're going to go ahead and call to order the meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, April 28th. We begin this morning with a flag salute. If you will please stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will proceed with the state of meeting procedures.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of April 28th, 2015. Agendas are available on the bench outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there's a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Melinda. All right. We move on to our consent agenda. Any board members have any items on the consent calendar they want removed for discussion? We will be pulling item 22 for discussion. It's the item regarding successor agency. Any members of the public have any item on consent that they would like removed for discussion? Seeing none, do we have a motion on consent? We have a motion, Holmes, second Duran to approve consent. Was that the right way or was it Duran? Oh, I'm sorry, we had a motion Duran. I just heard two voices from that end. A motion Duran, second Holmes to approve consent, absent item 22. Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Wigan?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Yuler?
Aye. Thank you very much. All right, this is the, actually, let's take public comment real quick, Janine, and then we'll jump to the agenda items if we could, please. So this is the time for public comment. Members of the public can address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, knowing, of course, that we cannot take action on items raised under public comment. If you want to address the board, please, as you step forward, let us know who you are, where you're from, and try to keep your comments to three minutes if you can, please. Thank you very much. Good morning.
Yes, sir. My name is Rob Weston. I live in Homewood at 3260 Ann Road, and I'm here representing the West Shore Association, which is the business association, actually, the oldest business association here at Lake Tahoe. And I've got three board members here with me as well. The ladies, if you could raise your hands, ladies, Marynell Hartnett, Lauren Nadolsky, and Kay Williams. We're kind of under duress a bit on the west shore. You're probably well aware that Highway 89's been described as a virtual minefield of road construction, and it's been four years now. We are very much aware of the need for the road construction, and I believe that most of the business owners understand and approve of the need to improve the Highway 89, control runoff into the lake. However, we've had also two horrible winters this past winter and the one prior, and really four years in a row now with mediocre winters. So our ability to do business, make TOT money for our rental properties and lodging properties, and the ability for us to contribute to sales tax has been somewhat diminished in winter, and we're hoping summers, you know, can offset that. And last summer did. I think last summer on the west shore, our revenues grew 12%. However, with the kind of impact we're having from the Caltrans project, it does have a negative impact on people stopping and shopping and doing business, and also the lodging properties staying when the road construction impacts them overnight. So there was a Caltrans electronic signboard, which actually prompted my writing to the board, and that signboard said, "Road construction next 26 miles, expect 30-minute delays." I mean, they could have put a gate across the road. So that was kind of the catalyst of us approaching you folks. Since then, I have some good news in that they've changed that signboard to read, "West Shore Road Work, Multiple Locations, Delays Monday to Friday." So it's much better without having the numerical numbers up there to scare people away. So that's been a tremendous improvement. But we are requesting some financial assistance from you, really to advertise to the public and our local community that the businesses, the parks, the recreation access points are all still open and quite available to people traveling down the west shore. Now, our request is for funding not to exceed $10,000, and it'd probably be less than that, actually. And we're also asking that we can do this, you know, through county staff, through the executive office, perhaps. We'd like to continue to have the executive office speak with Caltrans on our behalf, have them continue to work with us, which they've offered to do. One of the things on my proposal or letter here was that we would be producing banners and signs. That was one of the expenses I noted, about $1,200. Caltrans has offered to do those for us, so that expense has fallen off. One of the other expenses I've noted on the proposal was for electronic signboards. The Caltrans has agreed to allow us to put those in their right-of-way, which is tremendous, but we still need to pay for those signboards, and they're about $1,000 a month. We need two of them, and we want to run them for three months from the middle of June to the middle of September, so that we can actually advertise again that businesses, recreation sites, parks are all open, bike trails. So, you know, important things for our economic viability and stability. Lastly, we plan to run some advertising in the weekly magazine, which both locals and tourists pick up, and it comes out every week, and we'd like to run Quirps Page ads in that, and we would put your logo in that as well as our own, as well as Caltrans, who's seemingly working with us pretty well now. But again, we want to make sure that they continue to do that and understand the impact that they're having. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I would encourage you to, I don't know if DeeDee's here today. I know she was here yesterday. There she is. Just raise your hand. DeeDee, you were here yesterday. You saw the very creative video that we all saw about the economics up here in the basin, the money and the money.
I didn't get here till late.
Oh, you came at the reception, you came for the wine and beer.
Absolutely.
Not for the work. It is Tahoe, after all.
I'm a west shore guy. You can't fault me for that.
Anyway, let me assure you that DeeDee and her crew do great work. I can, I would recommend that you chat with her about putting together an outreach campaign that lets the media know that west shore is still open for business.
Right.
And while, yes, I see the benefit of the signs, I'm almost thinking of the old bermashave sign campaign where you had four or five different signs as you're coming 89 in from the Squaw Valley, Alpine Meadows areas, you're heading toward Tahoe City, just a series of maybe two or three or four signs that just kind of say, "Yes, there is stuff going on down west shore. We are open for business," that kind of a thing. So that's just my thought.
No, no, that's interesting. It saves us the electronic signboard expense, too, so.
Yeah, it would save on that, that's right.
Yeah.
So anyway, DeeDee, why don't you raise your hand again real quick, and you can chat with her, and I'm sure you guys can figure something out. And I'm sure Mr. Bosch doesn't mind me assigning out his resources from his office like I just did. Yes, ma'am, good morning.
Good morning. Board of Supervisors, staff, guests. Marynell Hartnett, Tahoe Real Estate Group, 2015, Tahoe Sierra Board of Realtors President, board member, West Shore Association, Placer County resident since 01-01-1983. I'm here to ask your support with our request for funding to advertise that the west shore is open for business and recreation. We've seen a positive change just yesterday within 24 hours through the assistance of Steve Nelson at Caltrans. The wording changed from "Stay out, nothing's here for you to see" to "Bring your patience and enjoy what the west shore has to offer," business, recreation, our crown jewel, the Emerald Bay, of course. As a Realtor since 1984, beginning my career at 6,400 Westlake Boulevard, and selling hundreds of properties, I'm not the only Realtor in our office or the other only Realtor selling on the west shore. I ask you, again, to help us encourage people to come, create transfer tax through the sale of real estate, sales tax through business expense, enjoy the recreation, and want to purchase here, come here for years to come. My address, I don't think I said, was 1785 Westlake Boulevard, Tahoe City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Linda Slack Cruz, 1452 Cromwell Lane, Tahoe Vista resident. I'm here this morning just to thank all of the supervisors for allowing me the time and the opportunity to speak with each of you individually. Supervisor Duran for Christina, thank you very much. I just want to thank you for the presentation yesterday. Placer County did a great job in giving us some more input as to where all of our funding is, and I just wanted to say that because I don't think that was said yesterday. So thank you for that. Supervisor Holmes and Supervisor Montgomery, I will update both of you again by email since I had new information for the rest of the supervisors. So again, thank you again for your time. I appreciate it, and I look forward to offering you a proposal very soon. Thank you.
Anybody else supposed to address the board on the public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on from public comment to supervisor committee reports. Any supervisors have anything that need to update the board, other board members for the good of the board? Well, since Robert didn't light up his light, I will report out on the activities that the county engaged in Washington, DC, two weeks ago now, I think. Well, I think for us, for the county stuff, it was two weeks ago. The Board of Supervisors annually does a federal advocacy trip where we outline what are our issues that we need some federal assistance on. Of course, a number of those include right where we're sitting. The Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project was a key component of a number of our conversations at the federal level with the Department of Transportation, as well as our congressional delegation, and of course, forest health and forest management-related issues, and how it affects those of you in the basin here. A big topic of conversation with a number of the federal agencies, as well as our congressional delegation. Robert and I had 14 meetings in three days across a number of different agencies, and David Bosch as well, and Lauren Clark, if Lauren's here, as well. And having done legislative advocacy at the federal level now, off and on for the better part of two decades, an awful lot of that on behalf of the county, I, my sense after this trip was this was one of the most productive trips that we have had. There seems to be a strong coalescence around the fact that we are dealing in an environment that, as was alluded to earlier, does have diminished dollars, and so let's focus on those policy things that we can focus on that affect the kind of changes that allow folks at the local level to effectively manage the resources. And so we had very good conversations with the federal regulatory agencies, as well as our congressional delegation, both McClintock and Lamalfa, on a number of topics, including the work being done here at the lake and the forestry stuff, as well as an awful lot of the work that we're doing over on the other side of the summit with the county's conservation planning effort, getting that completed, and the role the regulatory agencies play in assisting us getting that across the finish line. And so just for the board's edification, it was, I felt, an extremely effective trip, a good use of our time and our dollars, and it's nice to get the sense that, for the first time in a long time, we actually have folks pointed together in the right direction to assist us with our efforts here in Placer County. At least that was kind of my sense of it. Robert, I don't know if there's anything you want to add?
No, I would concur with that completely, and it's really rewarding to see things like the conservation plan, which has taken so long, be referred to as a model potentially, and including accolades for components of it that have never been done before. And as Kirk mentioned, we actually did work very, very hard, but we've developed some really good relationships over the years, and we need to do that in concert with the community, so we're happy to share any of that information and get good fodder to take back with us on the next trip, and working together, we can actually do things that I would have never thought possible before.
Thank you. All right, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I wanted to mention that while I was not back with the county, I did actually go back on behalf of the Placer County Air Pollution Control District. I serve on that board, and went back and had a number of very good conversations, both with our legislators and also with the various agencies relating to air pollution control issues. Probably the one that is most important up here in Tahoe is smoke impacts from forest fires. And the conversation was really about business resiliency and how, in thinking about the west shore and the impacts that you're having right now, how we can create better business resiliency, whether it's from things like smoke impacts of forest fires that caused the cancellation of the Iron Man and all the, you know, all the dominoes that sort of fall from that, or whether it's things like ongoing construction projects that impact small businesses. How do we teach businesses to become more resilient and create a broader, stronger footprint, so when they do have these impacts, expected or unexpected, they're able to cope better with them? Had a fantastic meeting with FEMA that has clearly some things in response to specific federally declared disasters, but we had the conversation about the difference between emergency and chronic. And what we see up here in California, and particularly in the basin, is chronic issues like road construction that goes on for years, or repeated forest fires that don't reach the level of a federal emergency or even a state declaration of emergency, but have really large negative impacts on small and large business. And FEMA, the folks from FEMA, you could see the light bulb go on over their heads, and they said, you know, "We need to figure out how to roll that emergency versus chronic conversation into how we respond to those things." They had some great suggestions for us, including money that they would potentially have available to help us do outreach and education and help businesses understand how they can become more resilient. And they suggested we work with state and county OES and can get some dollars in that way, and then work with the Sacramento Area Chamber of Commerce, who puts on the cap-to-cap program. So I'm really very excited about that. That was probably our best meeting, and they just got it, that, you know, as the climate changes and we have extended drought, and we have more wildfires, and we have smoke, and we have these impacts that we've not thought about before, we need to figure out a way to deal with them. So great meeting. We'll try to keep everybody posted on what we can work out through FEMA and both state and county OES, but really very helpful, and I think there's going to be some great opportunities, particularly for small business, to do some planning and some strategic outreach in the area about how to become more business resilient. That's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any other board members, anything else? All right, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and pick up the timed item, excuse me, not the timed item, the item that had been under consent, item 22, under consent. It is for board members, it's on page 245 of our board packet. In order to take up this item, we're going to adjourn as the Placer County Board of Supervisors and convene as the successor agency to the former Placer County Redevelopment Agency in order to hear a brief report from Ms. Windushausen, as well as a suggested modification to the resolution that is contained in our packet. Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Janine Windushausen, Placer County Treasurer. On February 3rd, your board, as a successor agency, approved the refinancing of the former redevelopment agency's three outstanding bonds for a projected savings of about $1.9 million. At that time, we stated that we would need to come back to the successor agency board to approve some other items, primarily the approval of the preliminary and final official statement, which the resolution is related to that approval. There is, as Supervisor Yuler mentioned, a slight modification to the resolution. In the sixth whereas, there is a typo referencing that February 3rd resolution. It reads Resolution Number 215029, and it should read Resolution Number 2015-029. And so with that modification, I would ask your board to approve the resolution, pending any questions that you might have.
Okay, 2015, thank you.
Yep, that's the sixth whereas.
Okay, yes.
The resolution number starts with reference to the year, which is 2015, and it omitted the zero.
Got it. Perfect. Okay, we, any questions by board members to the suggested modification of the resolution? Any questions by the public? If not, we're being asked to adopt the resolution as modified, as a motion?
Move approval.
Was that one Duran this time, or was that Holmes? That was Holmes this time, okay. We have a motion, Holmes, in a second, by Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janine. I like how you dropped the tax collector, apart from your title, by the way. In order to make it out of the room. And with that, we will now adjourn as the successor agency to the former Placer County Redevelopment Agency reconvened as Placer County Board of Supervisors in order to take up our first timed item, and that is the 905 timed item, the Presentation of Tahoe Public Art.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office here at Lake Tahoe. I would like to introduce Marguerite Sprague, who is here with us today. She is the Executive Director of Tahoe Public Art, which is a nonprofit organization based in the North Lake Tahoe area, started with some seed money that was allocated through your board out of our TOT funds, and she's got some exciting news and projects to talk with you about that they are working on now and plan to do in the future in our community. So I'm going to turn it over to Marguerite for the presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer, and I'm going to seat myself by the show-and-tell we brought for you.
Go ahead and push the button on your stand there, that should light up. There you go.
Very nice. Good morning, and I'd like to start by saying we're delighted to be here today, and you are some of our favorite people because of what you're making possible for Tahoe Public Art. What I'm going to talk about is essentially the who, what, why, when, where, and how of the program. Yes. Thank you.
That's the how part.
Yeah, that's right. It takes a village.
The red.
The red. This one.
Oh, no, that's it.
We'll try the.
Oops.
It's a laser pointer. There we go. Tahoe Public Art is a consortium of three local organizations that you're all quite familiar with. We have the North Tahoe Business Association. I'd like to give a quick shout-out. I believe we have Joy Doyle here, lurking somewhere there. And we also have Steve Miller from the Board of Directors. And Tahoe Public Art was actually incubated by the North Tahoe Business Association. It originated in their design committee. They worked on it for about two years, working with artists and other experts. And when the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project surfaced, they realized they had a terrific opportunity to really put, to walk the talk, to incorporate art or attempt to incorporate art in an infrastructure project. They pulled in North Tahoe Arts, which is our local organization serving the North Lake Tahoe. And then, as it's been moving along, we've pulled in the Tahoe City Downtown Association. I believe Stacy Lyons is here this morning, and we've been thrilled to have this three-headed beast. This relationship has been formalized through an MOU, but as I said, it takes a village. It's not just the three. There we go. We've been working with local groups in order to make this happen. We're working with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. We have a field of interest fund with them. The finances sit with them and are handled by them, would be the best way to put it. We're very much in debt to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. They have provided, you have provided through them, I suppose for more accuracy, initial seed funding and additional funding that is going specifically toward the Kings Beach Roundabout Art Project. So the mission of Tahoe Public Art, and I take a page out of Chief Schwartz's book. I don't, I won't read them, so I'm going to assume you can take a look, but to tell you instead, that this mission may seem rather self-evident, but it was formulated by a lot of expertise, the people who came together to form Tahoe Public Art, also in consultation with artists and other public art programs. Likewise, the goals formed by the same group, and that's where the details come into play. Specifically, meaningful art. That becomes a highly debatable topic, and we have to craft process in order to address that. Community identity is a major motivation of Tahoe Public Art, and again, that speaks back to meaningful. The collaborative opportunities for artists is something that is very, very exciting. We're seeing this happen in a number of places, and we believe that our community is very ripe for it, pulling them into infrastructure projects and in functional art as well. Of course, pulling in the youth as we find appropriate opportunities for that, and encouraging the use of local and sustainable materials. We were really delighted that with the Kings Beach proposals we received, artists really respected that criterion we had included, and a number of them made it a very primary point in their art proposals. And then, public art has a noted role in stimulating local economies. So then's the question, well, what is and is not public art? So we point out the Eiffel Tower here, which we're really actually not proposing to put in. Well, we have Pablo Picasso, who said about art in general, "The purpose of art is washing the dust of daily life off our souls." And that speaks to providing an experience to people. But we look at the Eiffel Tower and realize it can also serve as a rather iconic force. When you show the Eiffel Tower to anybody anywhere in the world, they're not going to start thinking about traffic jams. Well, no, maybe they are. They're not going to be thinking about Fresno. They're not going to be thinking about London. They're instantly going to think of Paris, maybe Champagne, maybe a batteau mousse, but they instantly identify it with Paris. And the Eiffel Tower stands as a rather important icon for France and the world. So we realize through it, public art can stand to create that same connection, so that you could show it to people anywhere in the world, and they will identify where it is. Public art also provides an alternative form of showing the world who we are as a community. When you see this piece that's in Tahoe City, people look at it that are visiting, and their first reaction is, oh, this is very pleasant. It looks mountainous. It's quite bucolic. And then when they step up closer and learn the history of the big tree, suddenly, they've learned something not just about the community's past, but about the community's values. The tree had to be removed. It was a safety issue, but we didn't really let it go. It is still here for people to look at, and suddenly, people have another kind of connection with Tahoe City, with that area, and a connection to the past, and an understanding of how the environment and natural features matter to us far beyond what is true in some places. Once again, back to the issue of meaningful art. You may recognize this piece. This is not going in Kings Beach, but it is going into the Kings Arena in Sacramento. And in recent months, it's brought a lot of attention to Sacramento. Some people love it, some people hate it. It definitely sparks the debate of what art is appropriate for what place. And then you look at some of the other artists in our past that we're aware of, people like Andy Warhol, who commented once, "I like to be the right thing in the wrong place and the wrong thing in the right place, because something interesting always happens." Tahoe Public Art is not looking for that approach. We're looking for the right thing in the right place for our environment. So you can see through some other examples the impact public art can have. I asked Sandy Evans Hall about this piece, because she was formerly in Colorado, and said, "Have you seen it?" And she said, "Seen it? I have a miniature on my desk." It stays with people when you have a really good experience with it. So Tahoe Public Art, reasons for it, we will create visual memories. We will create visual memories. That's been driven home also by educators, who talk about how, when you're teaching, and I'm guessing that's all ages, if you create a visual memory to go with a place or a concept, the rest of your life, you can call it up, and it gets you in your mind, and it gets you in your heart. Will augment a sense of place and deepen connections, as I said before. It will provide positive experiences in all kinds of weather, and provides positive experiences for all kinds of people, no matter what their background, their age, their physical ability. People who cannot get out and enjoy human-powered sports can enjoy public art that's positioned in town centers. And it's also an economic attractant. Who would not want to sit down and have a cappuccino to just enjoy this blue bear? Which, by the way, is at the Denver Convention Center. And we did find an interesting perspective from a public art organization that's been around since 1872, which was surprising to me. I didn't realize there were so many, there's one that's that old. They said, "In comparison with big-name gallery shows, public art is often underappreciated, much like landscape architecture is. But there's lots to applaud. It's free. There are no tickets. People don't have to dress up. You can view it in groups or alone. It's open to everyone." So where are we right now? Right now, the major project that is underway for Tahoe Public Art is the Kings Beach Roundabout Art. How we went about that was we consulted with other public art programs regarding processes and lessons learned, and they helped us very much. We prepared our Call to Artists, which is the same thing as an RFP, and we released it nationally in November. We were delighted to receive 38 proposals back. The furthest away came from Hawaii to the west and Vermont to the east. And we did get a call out of London from a watchmaker interested in creating a town clock for Kings Beach, but for whatever reasons, that didn't come through. We formed actually a three-jury process. The first jury was 12 people that selected 14 semifinalists. We're delighted to let you know, as you probably already knew, that Plaster County was well-represented on that jury. We had a second jury of seven people that narrowed it down to five finalists. And then the third jury was the community. And we had a meeting here, a community workshop meeting in March, where the community selected the two winners that you see here on the table. And for a moment about that meeting, when we went about it, we tried to get the word out every way we could think of, just about hiring drummers, just to make sure we could drum it around the lake. We set a target. If things went well, we would get 200 people, just based on past performances of meetings. We had 429 people roll in that night. All ages, quite a few families. People enjoyed it. They came in. It was in this very room. If you were here, you remember, it was a little bit crowded at times. People lingered, and then they lingered outside. They lingered in the parking lot. They lingered around the beach. There were quite a few fairly spirited discussions. There were quite a few people shocked to find how stupid their friends were in their choices. But the end of the day, everybody got to have their say. We also, as everyone finished, we shut the doors. We brought in our CPA, who I've got to say ran an ironclad process. And we brought in our counters, and under his wise guidance, we did all the counting that night. And so we have our winners. Leaf Sails by Troy Corliss, which you see on my left. Troy is an artist out of Truckee, California. The materials of green and blue, that is the material that will go in the leaf veins. And he has also done a similar design in Capitola recently, and has been very pleased with how it holds up in weather. He has definitely crafted his design in order to withstand our winds, the snow, and all the various kinds of weather. Second place was Swimming with Friends by artist David Boyer. Although David is a native Californian, he's working out of Reno at the moment. And this piece does not move the way it appears and the way the model moves. This piece in the final will not move, but the fish move. They serve as windsocks. They move slowly, and although the model isn't doing it right now, they will all face the same direction in the actual piece. And when the wind shifts, they will shift slowly. They are actually windsocks. And for a sense of scale, this little guy here is six feet tall. So you see, it's roughly 12 feet. I need to note to you that the voting was close for the first three. The difference in votes between these two was four votes. The difference between this one and the third place was 11 votes. So it was a very close finish. There was a gap between the first three and the number four and number five. Since we had our successful community meeting, we had our two winners. It was time for our fly in the ointment, and that turned out to be that Caltrans has frozen all transportation art projects in the state of California, because they're reviewing their policies. They reassured us that the policy review is surrounding issues of copyright and donor recognition, and they readily acknowledged, "We don't plan any donor recognition issues for traffic roundabouts," so they're unconcerned. And the copyrights, of course, regarding the relationship between the state and the artist. They'll get it ironed out, there's no doubt on that. But, and they've decided to just halt all of their projects. We'd hoped we were going to be able to get everything but done, but in fact, our Caltrans rep, the night before the community meeting, was informed by his superiors, "No, you will get nothing done on this." So we're anticipating this will put the installation into 2016. So a quick recap. Tahoe Public Art, past, present, and future. In the past, you may recall, in September of 2014, we had the temporary public art exhibit, Detours, which seemed to be awfully appropriately named for the Commercial Core Improvement Time. We had roughly 1,000 people come through that outdoor exhibit. That's based on brochures. It could have been more. Currently, we're working on the Kings Beach Roundabout Art Project. And future projects we have under discussion right now include Fanny Bridge, has been a very exciting upcoming project. And the Tahoe City PUD, we were thrilled. They reached out to us recently. They are replacing a sewer pipe. You may recall putting gum on it at some point in your life, as you floated underneath it. And they've reached out to us about turning that into a potential public art project. We've submitted a proposal to them, and our fingers are crossed. North Star has reached out to us as well, as has Tahoe Fund. And we're discussing temporary art projects and functional art projects as well. And a side note, that we recently uncovered a very interesting statistic, which is the Travel Industry Association of America conducted a survey last year, and they found that two-thirds of adult travelers who traveled 50 miles or further from home took in art and cultural activities while on their trip. And even more interestingly, about 30% of those people extended their trip in order to do so. And through their survey, they're estimating they were looking at about 92 million cultural travelers, which is a rather staggering figure. We also note that other mountain towns, such as Jackson and Park City, have taken notice of this, and they have been installing public art in their town centers as well, and they've been getting terrific response. It's our turn. So then, to provide you with just a little bit of inspiration, we thought we would show you some public art examples from around the world that we find rather motivating. This is in Singapore, although in every place we've shown this presentation, I've had people come up and say, "That would be awesome at Fanny Bridge." This is in Hamburg, Germany. I'd just like you to imagine for a moment this in Lake Tahoe.
Tessie.
I was going to say, that's maybe not what people think of as Tessie, but...
Tessie, yeah, she is.
And these are, we have Brussels, Belgium, and New York with the glowing yoga. The chandelier, the site I found that said that it had been an installation in an unidentified town, where they'd put multiple chandeliers down Main Street. I'm guessing they don't have 100 mile-an-hour winds. And then the statue of the photographer is located around the corner of a restaurant that is called Paparazzi. And speaking of functional art, these power towers in Iceland are very arresting. As are the fish made out of plastic water bottles in Rio de Janeiro. And finally, this silhouette is ever-changing, depending on the time of day in Romania. Thank you so much for your time, and I'd love to answer any questions or fob them off on one of our partners.
Any board members have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you so much to everybody who was involved in this. I was not able to attend the public meeting, but I just got such incredible feedback from people who did attend about how well-organized it was, how there was such an incredible selection of art to choose from, and how it was a very difficult decision, because the art was just top-notch, all of it. And even people who didn't get their first choice have been really pleased with, with the choices that did come forward. I'm a little disappointed by Caltrans, but hopefully, we will make that work. And I just really want to say thank you to you and your partners, and I really look forward to a lot more public art installations here in the East End of the county, because I think it's just going to burnish our already, you know, fabulous prize that is Lake Tahoe. So thank you.
Supervisor Holmes?
Yes, thank you for a nice presentation. I just have a question. Was there any consideration given to the indigenous population of the basin? There may be some already that I don't know about, but I just wondered if there was any consideration for them.
Thank you so much for asking that question.
You're welcome.
I didn't put him up to it, Steve, I promise. Yes, there was quite a lot. In fact, I have, we had the five finalists out for your reception last night, and two of the ones that didn't make it through were based around Washoe legend. One in particular that was Three Stones by Bob Stokes. He had actually worked with the tribe to create that, and it turned out to be representational of their system for marking both important places and food caches. And then the other one was called Da'waga, which was, I have to admit to you publicly, I don't know how to avoid it. We were calling it Darth Vader, because, for quick, you know, discernment, shaped rather like this. And that was also based on Washoe history and tales of this. And furthermore, we did distribute our call to the tribe, and it went out to tribal artists. And I got a call the day after our deadline from one of the tribal artists, who had been on a vision quest when the call went out, and had returned the day before, and he said, "I realize I can't get it together, you know, I've missed my deadline, but I want to work with you." And the ideas he was describing were very, very exciting. And the tribe also contacted me to say, they were very appreciative. They heard from a number of artists who submitted, and they were really happy to have a sense of respect for their history and respect for wanting to get it right. And so, yeah.
There's a little sense of it with the fish, because that was the source of their protein.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
All right. While this is not an item necessarily open for public debate, if there's anybody that feels compelled to address the board on this item, we're happy to take a couple of folks under public comment. All right, seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Our 920 ten item is a County Executive Office item. Mr. Snyder's going to lead the conversation regarding the Tahoe City Downtown Association.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity this morning. Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development. This morning, we're going to receive a presentation from the highly esteemed Stacy Lyons with the Tahoe City Downtown Association. An annual update on the status of their organization, that thanks to the board, in large part, they can sustain themselves. The TCDA was formed in 2004. Their mission is to enhance and promote a vibrant and prosperous commercial and social center for the residents and visitors of Tahoe City. So this morning, we're going to learn a little bit about how they've done that so well over the past year. Take it away, Stacy.
Is this on?
Now it is.
Is this on now? Yes. All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board of Supervisors, staff, and public. It's an honor to be here today, presenting about the Tahoe City Downtown Association. My name is Stacy Lyons, and I am the Executive Director. May 1st will be my one-year anniversary with the Downtown Association, so I missed this presentation last year, but I'm very excited to be here giving it today. What I'll be doing today is talking about some highlights, some updates, and the future of Tahoe City and the Tahoe City Downtown Association. Here we go. So just quickly, our mission, and we did update our mission a little bit. The Tahoe City Downtown Association is dedicated to the promotion and enhancement of the Tahoe City community. Through innovation, leadership, advocacy, and events, we serve as the local voice to maintain a vibrant and prosperous place to live, work, play, and visit. And that is the tagline for the TCDA. Through a strategic planning process, a year ago, we identified five focus areas that we're going to be working on over the next three years, and that is to produce great events, to implement creative marketing in the TCDA, to advocate for a better Tahoe City, to serve as a catalyst of innovation, and to strengthen our capacity in order to support our community-building vision. And our vision, and I'm a believer of this vision, is the TCDA wants to make Tahoe City the best mountain town in America, so we hope that you join our movement. And so, just to meet the Tahoe City Downtown Association, we are a nonprofit 501(c)(6) corporation founded in 2004, and we are, we have 11 Board of Directors. We have a five-person executive committee team, and so our president, a vice president, a treasurer, and a secretary. We really, we really represent a very nice, diverse mix of industries, from the professional industry, we have a restaurant owner, lodging, retail, media, and professional services. Our president is the publisher for the Sierra Sun, and my vice president is the editor-in-chief of the Tahoe Weekly. So we know how to get good promotion in Tahoe City, get a board that really represents the media right here in town. Additionally, we really have a lot of great, young, dynamic business owners. Four of our new members are youthful, they're energetic, and they're really adding some nice life to our community and to our Downtown Association. The staff is myself, is the Executive Director. We have an office manager, Jamie Olson, and we have a part-time events and volunteer coordinator, And you can see, I'm kind of a kooky Executive Director. I don't mind wearing costumes and dressing up and really being the face of the Downtown Association. I think that was probably why they hired me. That was what I did with my old job. But I just going over a few TCDA highlights. This was our 10th year anniversary in 2014, so we're going on our 11th year strong this year. And we were formed in 2004, under the guiding principles of the Main Street Four Point Approach, which is organization, promotion, design, and economic restructuring. In 2004, myself was hired. We also have our part-time events coordinator, and we really, and our office manager work really well as a dynamic team. We finalized our three-year strategic plan in 2014, in December, so we're using that as our vision moving forward into the future. We've expanded many Tahoe City events, and we've grown a lot of our volunteer base, as well as increased our marketing efforts. So we're doing a great job promoting the Tahoe City Downtown Association and Tahoe City in general. We've doubled a lot of our beautification projects. We are the ones that are in charge of the beautiful flower baskets that go in throughout downtown Tahoe City, the wonderful holiday lighting projects that happen in the winter. So we really want Tahoe City to be vibrant every month, every season of the year. We are a partner in the wonderful Tahoe Public Art Program with the North Tahoe Business Association and North Tahoe Arts, so we really are working well with our community partners. We are working with Plaster County to... We are working with Placer County to possibly form a financing district in downtown Tahoe City to always make sure town looks nice and beautiful all year round. And we were nominated for three North Lake Tahoe Community Awards, which was pretty exciting. We didn't win, but it's an honor to be nominated for Nonprofit of the Year, Hospitality Business Award, and I randomly got nominated for Citizen of the Year. So, that was pretty exciting. Another Stacy won, so I feel like, you know, at least it went to another Stacy. Stacy Caldwell, who's incredible from the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, and she very much deserved that award. We are continuing to grow our social media. I know that's kind of going into the future. I'm barely a millennial, so I really want to make sure that I'm working to speak to millennials moving forward with Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. We really want to make sure that every age group is learning about the benefits and wonders of Tahoe City. And our membership is at record levels. When I started here in 2000, May 2014, we had about 130 to 140 members. Now we're close to 190 members. So, people are understanding that this is an organization that's getting things done, that is dedicated and cares about this community, and it's showing by our members. We have business members at the premier level. We have 16. Just yesterday, after I left the reception, I went to our mailbox, and we have a new premier member that joined just yesterday, the Pepper Tree Hotels. So, those are people that are giving us a little bit more money in order to fulfill our mission, which is something we're very, very grateful for. And a huge thanks to our premier community partners and members, and that is Placer County, because without your support and funding, we would not be able to exist as an organization. The NLTRA, the Tahoe City Public Utility District, and other business associations and organizations that we work throughout this community. And just to give you a snapshot of our 2014 financials, you can see that we are a nonprofit, so we do pinch our pennies as much as possible. A good chunk of our funding does come through our Placer County contract, donations and fundraisers, events, membership dues, sponsorships. But just as quickly as we get our $230,000 roughly, we are eager to spend that money. So, and the biggest expense, obviously, is staff and payroll, working with some independent contractors, our administration expenses, our efforts on beautification and economic development. So you can see, we ended up last year, you know, not in a deficit, but it's always close. So in 2015, our focus is to boost our memberships, our sponsorships, and our event income, so we'll become a more profitable nonprofit organization. And so you can see, our membership really is a diverse group of industries, from professional circuit to dining, to retail, lodging properties, real estate. And there's three different levels in the Tahoe City Downtown Association. Premier, which we offer about 30 benefits for $1,000 a year. Value, we offer about 20 benefits for $250, and then Economy, which is $150 a year. So it's not very expensive via part of our organization, but the main reason that our community joins us, I believe, is because they believe in our vision, our mission and vision, and they're committed to making Tahoe City the best mountain town in America. And that right there is the best of Tahoe. I can ask any of you to read those organizations up there. It's growing every day, so we are very proud of our members, and we always are looking for new members to join our organization.
You're running out of room, though.
Yeah, I know. We'll make it extra small font. There we go. And so in the news, I mentioned this quickly in my little highlight at the beginning of the presentation, we really do our best to make sure that we are promoted in a very positive way. And so we work very well with local media such as the Sierra Sun, the Tahoe Weekly, Truckee Tahoe Radio, so Moonshine Inc., so you'll always find ads and stories about what's going on in Tahoe City locally, but we're doing our best to expand regionally. If you picked up the recent edition of Sierra Food, Wine, and Art, there's a great article about where to spend Father's Day, and that is in Tahoe City, at our Solstice Festival, our concerts at Commons Beach, our wine walk, our car show. We were featured in VIA Magazine with the top five best things to do in Tahoe City, and that came out in December. We've often been in Marin Magazine as well as the Sacramento Bee. So we're really doing our best to attract folks from out of town as well as really get the community here knowing about what's happening in Tahoe City. And events, this is kind of our bread and butter. This is what we spend a lot of our energy and time on, is our event production. And we put on, if you're adding all the concerts at Commons Beach to the mix, we put on probably over 20 events a year in Tahoe City. And some of the highlights are, last year, we put on a street dance event for our fireworks. We moved Oktoberfest outside the Gatekeepers Museum in Leighton Park. And we're expanding an event called First Fridays in Tahoe City, where the first Friday of every month, our businesses are staying open a little bit later, offering appetizers, food, discounts, and a chance to hang out and experience life in downtown Tahoe City. So you can see, there's a lot of great things. We like to give back to the community with a cleanup day. We have fundraiser events. We have fun events that really happen all year round. And then moving into 2015, we've got even more events in the horizon, and one that's coming up really soon is our Fourth of July fireworks. It's our 70th anniversary this year, and so we are going to have a Bell Bottom Beach Bash. Say that five times fast. So we're going to have an event at Commons Beach. We're going to be in the street. We're just going to have a fun activity, and we're putting on two fundraisers ahead of time because we have to raise the money for the fireworks, and that really does take a village to make happen. So we put on a lot of fundraiser-raising events in order to make the fireworks really sparkle. We want Tahoe City to be the visitor's choice to go see the fireworks on the Fourth of July. We also are excited about our concert series at Commons Beach. I hope that if you've not been, you go to them. They are the largest free music event on the North Shore. 12 weeks from June 21st to September 6th, every Sunday, head down to Commons Beach. It attracts over 30,000 people to Commons Beach every season. So it's a great lineup. We have local bands, and we also have national touring bands that come play for our community at the concert series. So a lot of great events on the horizon. We put on business seminars. We're putting on one in May and also one in the fall to really give our businesses something more than just events and other activities. We want to make sure they survive and they thrive in Tahoe City. And the future of Tahoe City, I really feel like, is very bright. The buzz is back. Businesses are doing very well. I talk to our businesses on a regular basis, and things are going very well. We have a new barbecue place called Mo's Barbecue, and they always have wonderful music in the evenings that are attracting more people to Tahoe City. We have a theater called the Tahoe Art House that puts on not only movies, but they also put on entertainment and activities. We have a Lake Tahoe Dance Collective. There's a lot of economic and community revitalization and reinvestment process happening right now or on the horizon, such as the Fanny Bridge Project, downtown mobility improvement planning. We want to make sure that pedestrians and bicycles can get around town good, and Placer County is committed to making that a priority. The Hendrickson's Building is moving forward, hopefully, to become a boutique hotel in the next few years, as well as the Aviva Inn is getting a renovation, and it's turning into Tahoe City Base Camp Hotel. So, two boutique hotels in the horizon in Tahoe City. Our Lighthouse Center, which is where the Safeway building is, is getting a renovation right now. We're undergoing a Tahoe Area Basin Plan right now, and Placer County is committed to making sure the developers have incentives for building in town centers such as Tahoe City. The North Lake Tahoe Resort Association is undergoing their tourism master plan right now, which we're excited to be a part of. We're part of the Tahoe Public Art Program. The Maritime Museum is actually moving to Tahoe City, and that's something that we're really excited, and I've been told that they're going to be turning into an educational center. So that's another great tourist attraction in our town center. And TCDA has a wonderful commitment to our members, and the TOT is still increasing, so that's something that is showing very positive outlook, not only now, but into the I just have a one-minute slideshow of pictures. I love putting presentations together and making people smile. So, this right here just represents my community, my members, my volunteers. They really are why I'm here today. I mean, they give so much to this community every day, and I'm honored to be a part of such an exciting, wonderful place to live, work, play, and visit. There normally is exciting music going onto this, so you can just have that going on in your head right now.
Some lover boy.
I told him not to turn it on. And that's all that I have to say. I just want to thank you for your continued commitment to the Tahoe City Downtown Association and Tahoe City.
Great, thank you. Any board members have any comments on the presentation? And seeing none, any member of the public have any comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up is another presentation, this one by the North Tahoe Business Association. Dave will be joining you for this one.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development. This morning, we're joined by Joy Doyle, Executive Director extraordinaire of the North Tahoe Business Association. Joy is going to walk us through her annual update. I won't state their mission because she's probably changed it between now and the time I...
No, I haven't, but it's in my presentation.
It's in the presentation, so I don't have to restate it. As we know, they're a force to be reckoned with on the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project Open for Business Campaign, and they're also at the center of all the action on commercial revitalization in Kings Beach and throughout the Bay-to-Bay business community. So on that note, take it away, Joy.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Chairman Yuler, members of the board, and guests. Good morning, everybody, and I always like to welcome you to Kings Beach when you're here. It's a very special spot, and I know you guys enjoy it when you're here, too, so I want to also thank you for the opportunity to present this annual update to you. So, we'll start with that we have been around since 1979, quite a long time. Our mission is to improve economic vitality and quality of life in the communities of North Lake Tahoe. Here comes the graphics. Our purpose is twofold: to provide businesses with communication, resources, networking, and training, and to create and market NTBA's district as vibrant and a unique sense of place. We have been partnering with Placer County to successfully implement the Main Street Four Point Approach in Cornelian Bay, Tahoe Vista, Kings Beach, and Crystal Bay since Since then, we have effectively leveraged Placer County's investment through thousands of volunteer hours, tens of thousands of dollars sourced from external places, and through increased organizational capacity. NTBA's staff and board is entering into a third year of a three-year strategic plan. I can hardly believe it. It seems like yesterday that we started that. This is improving our success and providing measurable results and goals. NTBA is run by a dedicated Board of Directors made up of 10 volunteers representing each of our towns and a wide variety of business industries. We have a staff of three. We have about 100 active volunteers, which contribute about 1,500 hours to our organization annually. And today, whoops, help me with that, Dave. Today, we have 187 members, and I just want to point out that our membership numbers are real numbers. Our staff audits our membership numbers on a monthly basis, so essentially, if you're late by 90 days, we drop you. So these are real numbers and up to date. Since 2009, our membership has grown nearly 37%. We've added a net of 55 new members in the last five years, and I'm going to say it today, so make this come true. Our goal for this year is 200 members, and you can see, we're on pace to hit that. 41% of our members are at the elite and premier level compared to only 21% in 2011, and as a result, our membership has increased 27% since 2011. NTBA's elite members, including Placer County, receive increased benefits, special recognition, and logo placement. So we want to always thank and recognize Placer County as an elite member. We are excited that the transformation of Kings Beach is underway, and for the most part, our community survived the first year of KVCCIP construction. It was crazy out there a few days, but we got through it. And NTBA is doing everything we can to lessen construction impacts on businesses and to act as a resource. Last year, thanks to funding from Placer County through TOT taxes, NTBA executed the first year of a business mitigation strategy. The goal was twofold: to educate and empower our business community, and to market Kings Beach as open for business so that visitors and residents were reminded to visit, recreate, and most importantly, spend money in Kings Beach businesses despite construction. Last year, we executed an open-for-business marketing campaign late May through September. It had a strong call to action, a reason for patrons to come and spend money in Kings Beach by providing a chance to win a $500 grand prize and weekly prize packages. Patrons simply came into a business, filled out an entry form. There were 33 participating businesses, both retailers, restaurants, and recreation outlets. The contest ran for nine weeks, from July 14 through September 17, and we received over 1,400 contest entries. That's an average of 150 entries per week. Our plan is to run a very similar marketing campaign this year, and the same contest in the same timeframe, and we're going to use the email addresses we captured last year. In addition, NTBA compiled a Tips for Success Guide and distributed that to our members last April, and then again this month, in conjunction with when construction activity started on the highway. The guide provides valuable resources and positive tips and ideas to help businesses succeed during construction, and I encourage other associations and areas that are undergoing construction either currently or will be in the near future to have access to this guide. It works everywhere, so use it as a resource, please. There's valuable resources and positive tips and ideas for everybody to take advantage of if their town is going through construction. At the end of last summer, we went out with a survey to our members to gauge what the effects were of construction on our business community. The results, unfortunately, were a bit inconclusive. We had quite a few members saying that they saw at least 20% increases in their business last year. Some said 20% decreases, while others said their business was flat. So of course, it's difficult to know what impact construction had on these numbers, but we did go out with a survey to get a sense for whether all of the marketing efforts that we were doing were working. One thing we do know for sure is that one successful Kings Beach business did relocate their business last fall to Truckee, a decision, I'm sure, that was based on many factors. The space that the business used to lease, unfortunately, is still vacant. And add to this, there are many other vacancies in Kings And add to this, there are many other vacancies in Kings Beach and as well, underutilized or under undeveloped parcels in our community. Unfortunately, recently, I've also heard that there are two other businesses in Kings Beach that are considering moving to Truckee, and I just want to say, we really can't afford to have any more businesses leave our commercial core. With the current robust economy, new businesses are opening and development seems to be happening all around us, but unfortunately, not in our district. For a variety of reasons, which are identified in Placer County's incentive plan for town centers, new business startups and private commercial investment and development on Lake Tahoe's north shore is relatively non-existent. Unfortunately, sometimes the situation seems rather bleak when you go to one of my Economic Vitality Committee meetings. It can get kind of negative in there sometimes. So we want to urge you and Placer County staff to quickly create programs and an atmosphere that turns this around so that we can have a commercial core that matches the infrastructure improvements that you've invested in and the unparalleled natural assets that Kings Beach has to offer. We are ready to assist in any way possible. We want those Economic Vitality Meetings to be much more upbeat. Last February, I mentioned to you all that we launched a redesigned website homepage that is blog-based. We added an improved event calendar and a searchable online business directory. These improvements were through the efforts of NTBA staff and our Promotions and Marketing Committee volunteers. Combined, these efforts resulted in 460% increase in visits to our website in the first year alone, and we're currently averaging 3,700 visits per month to our site. This brings more visibility and traffic to our members, increasing the value of their membership, and is a powerful marketing tool for North Lake Tahoe. Events are a form of marketing that create vitality, a sense of place, and draw visitors. NTBA allocates significant resources towards 12, whoops, here we go, 12 annual special events. Our members and the community see very tangible results from these efforts, and we get tangible results, and we see all kinds of happy, smiling faces in our community. Event audience surveys show that people spend money on lodging, dining, and shopping before and after they attend NTBA events, and events generate significant revenue for our organization through sponsorships and other sources. Other effective marketing tools that NTBA utilizes is email marketing and social media, and we're tracking against our measurable goals with these channels, and they are helping to market North Lake Tahoe and our members. Since February 2012, NTBA has offered three free small business seminars per year that serve as an excellent member recruitment and training tool. We feature local speakers on relevant topics and have an average attendance of 42. In January, we started a new networking and referral group to help businesses increase their referral marketing. It's rather small to start. We have nine businesses. We're meeting bi-weekly, and so far, since we started tracking, we've tracked $800 in sales through the group's referrals. So just over the last couple of meetings, we've started a little tracking report. NTBA collaborates to provide several area-wide programs, including the North Lake Tahoe Leadership Program, now in its 12th year, with 27 participants and over 225 alumni, including me. I went through the program last year and graduated. It was awesome. The Shop Local Holiday Contest, which tracked more than $400,000 in local spending last holiday season, and the new Year-Round Shop Local Program, which is a branding awareness campaign throughout the region. Additionally, we participate in the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, Business Association, and Chamber Coalition, which helps to produce several in-market advertising campaigns, several of which are designed to move visitors from the mountain resorts to the lakeshore businesses in the wintertime, and then vice versa in the summer. And last but not least, Tahoe Public Art, which you learned more about this morning. And I want to remind you that this consortium did start in NTBA's Design Committee under the leadership of Steve Miller, who's on my board and chairs that committee. This continues to be a priority initiative for us. I want to thank you for your support of Tahoe Public Art, and just let you know, it's something I'm extremely passionate about, and I firmly believe will help to diversify North Lake Tahoe's tourism economy in the future. Looking ahead, we will continue with ongoing Main Street implementation efforts with priority focus on helping businesses through KBCCIP construction. Year two and three, commercial revitalization and business recruitment. We want to develop one to two new events for 2016, of course, during off-peak periods. We're in the process of designing and ultimately administering a new streetlight banner program in Kings Beach, and of course, we're excited about the unveiling of the Kings Beach Roundabout NTBA is excited to play an active role in North Tahoe's transition into the future with opportunities provided through the regional plan and community plan updates, KBCCIP improvements, and commercial revitalization and business recruitment. We are encouraged by Placer County's economic development initiative, and are, we're anxious to assist in the facility, in the facilitation of the Town Center Incentive Plan in Kings Beach. We recognize more than anyone, Kings Beach Commercial Core's tremendous potential, and we're poised to assist in maximizing this in any way possible. We very much appreciate Placer County's support of the North Tahoe Business Association, and we believe we provide an excellent return on your investment. We look forward to working with you and your staff and your ongoing support of our mission to improve economic vitality and quality of life in the communities of North Lake Tahoe. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Any questions or comments by board members on the North Tahoe Business Association presentation? Seeing none, any members of the public?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our 10, excuse me, our 9:45 timed item is the Master Plan Status for the Marthus Creek Lakes and Dam Master Plan Update. I believe Mr. Kratz is going to lead our conversation this morning on this item.
Yes, sir, Chairman Yuler. Good morning. Peter Kratz with Public Works here to present this item. I'd like to introduce Tom Urki. He is the Area Manager of the Sacramento District of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to do the bulk of the presentation here, but just want to give you initial setting of this item from the county perspective. What he's going to talk to you today about is a master plan for Marthus Valley for lands owned by the Corps of Engineers across much of that, Marthus Valley that you see here on the slide. And it really goes back to 1977, the original master plan. So it's kind of a long overdue effort. There have been some updates over time, but this is the first big, in my mind, robust effort to look at how the land is managed on the core land. It's, it's really a lot of focus here on the recreation of that land, because if you don't know, if you live in this region, it is highly used for recreation purposes. There's a number of trails across the land. Tom will get into some of the specifics of that. As, as your board knows, I think Waddle Ranch was land that was purchased next to the core land, and it gets, again, highly used for recreation. The focus from our, from the county perspective really as this master plan goes forward is really having the core continue to focus on the recreation use and really look at what are called transportation corridors, one to the northeast side of the land and one to the, to the southwest. The southwest being south of and west of Highway 267, where we really want to establish a Class 1 trail across that area, working closely with the North Star Community Services District, who's been kind of the lead for facilitating that effort in Placer County. And then on the northeast end is, is the core land drops into Nevada County, and the town of Truckee has a robust trail network, and they want to make sure they can establish connections through the core land as well. So that's kind of the basis from the county and town perspectives. I do want to mention, Supervisor Montgomery really got together a stakeholder group as this master plan was rolled out, and a lot of public comments came back on the recreational uses. And so Jennifer spearheaded, you know, getting with Congressman McClintock's office, who was very interested and involved with this process as well, and also obviously the town of Truckee. I want to shout out to the Department of Facility Services, Annie Fisher. She, he's been very involved historically, looking at this and working with the North Star Community Services District. And the CSD really has been kind of that, that big leader for the county in establishing a trail network south of 267. So Mike Stottemeyer with that group is, I want to give a shout out to him. So with all that ado, and giving that setting for you, I'll turn it over to Tom Urki, and he'll roll out a little bit more detail of what we're, what we're talking about today. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Morning supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to come and present. As Peter mentioned, my name is Tom Urki. I'm the Northern Operations Area Manager for the Army Corps of Engineers, and that means that I oversee New Hogan Lake, Stanislaw River Parks, Inglebrite, Black Butte, and Marthus Creek Reservoir. You're not supposed to have favorites in my line of work, but when one of your projects is in the backyard of Lake Tahoe, it's kind of hard not to have favorites. So I'm really happy to be up here, happy to be part of the management team for Marthus Creek Reservoir. My background is actually in recreation. I was a park ranger for many years for the Army Corps of Engineers. A little plug for the Army Corps, we're actually the number-one provider of recreation in the nation. A lot of people don't realize that, but we have a lot of reservoirs, and people are attracted to water, and that's what brings our visitors out. So I've spent most of my career as either a park ranger or a park manager, so it's exciting for me to be able to work on a project like this, to be able to bring people out on trails and visit our projects and provide recreation opportunities for them. As Peter mentioned, we haven't had a master plan update since 1977, and that's problematic because it's a document that's really designed to be about every 10 to 15 years, and frankly, the reason we haven't been able to, to create an update is it's a rather expensive document. Just putting the time and resources together to, to study our lands and waters and look at things like carrying capacity and, and management objectives turns out to be a rather robust effort. But I'm happy to say we've obtained funding to do so, and we're moving forward. And Peter mentioned that we have an excellent group of stakeholders, and I want to thank again Supervisor Montgomery. She's been instrumental in steering this effort for us, and I'm happy to be able to say that I think we're moving in the right direction after some trips and falls, and I'll kind of get into that when we talk about our scoping meetings and some of the comments that we got from your constituents and our park visitors. So the main opportunities up at Marthus Creek, from a recreational standpoint, we have a very nice campground, a 25-site campground tucked away in the pine trees. It's very, little-known. We, we are very proud of that area. And then we have the Well Mill Tea Wildlife Area, which is over 1,000 acres of area, and the primary use of it is trails, and folks love to bring their dogs out to that area. So we mistakenly, in our, in our master plan update, were trying to address some natural resource management objectives, and we proposed that we would make the entire area on-leash site. And after our public scoping meeting in Truckee in late 2014, we heard from your constituents, our park visitors, and with the help of Supervisor Montgomery and our stakeholders, we've compromised on that, and we'll have areas now that do have on-leash activity for dogs, and also areas where people can remain with their dogs off-leash, which I'm, I'm very happy to be able to tell our park visitors because they were very passionate about wanting that type of recreation. So a little bit about master plans. They provide a programmatic approach to us managing our lands and resources. They identify recreational opportunities and measures to preserve and protect natural resources, and they should not be confused with our, our water management plan, our water control manual. We have some dam safety issues at Marthus Creek, and this effort is more focused on recreation and natural resources, and then we have a whole different study going on to address our dam safety issues up there. The master plan also sets the stage for, for things to come, and Peter mentioned the Marthus Valley Trail. We're happy to be able to lay the groundwork in this master plan for the Marthus Valley Trail. We've provided a corridor for both that effort and then the, the City of Truckee Trail that, that was also mentioned. And so it's kind of important, I guess, that we acknowledge it's a two-step process. We need to get the, the master plan done so that we have the, the authority to look at efforts like the Marthus Valley Trail, and we're also working that effort with our partners, North Star, and the stakeholders that were mentioned. There'll be a separate NEPA action that we're, that we're analyzing and, and working with the SHPO to, to make sure that we can get that effort moving. So the master plan, it's in its final stages, I'm happy to, to say. Again, Supervisor Montgomery has been critical. She's now leading an effort to review our final draft. We wanted to make sure that the compromises that we set forth with the stakeholders were captured accurately, and they were nice enough to review that plan for us one more time because we were about to provide that plan to our Colonel, and when the Colonel signs it, we will be having our final plan. So some of the compromises that I'm happy to announce that we've, that we've adopted by working with these stakeholders, instead of the dog on leash at all areas, we've worked to make compromises such as having seasonal closures for wildlife if needed during nesting periods and things, sensitive species, things like that, providing both on- and off-leash areas, and focusing on providing our visitors with the recreation they want while protecting our natural resources. So that's, that's the briefing that I have prepared for you. If you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Supervisor Montgomery?
No question, but I really wanted to give a huge shout-out to the Corps for being so responsive, and I also want to say you guys are giving me way too much credit. Frankly, our partners with Nevada County, the town of Truckee, and the Congressman's office were, you know, equally driving forces in making sure this conversation continued so that whatever does go to the Colonel for signature is something that the community has really had a very robust opportunity to weigh in on. And the Corps has been fantastic to work with, and, and I know that, you know, government entities don't often get compliments, so thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it very much. I know there are members, representatives from the town, from North Star. I don't see anyone from Nevada County here today, but we have the stakeholders who were part of that discussion. I did see Kim, I think, from Congressman McClintock's office here. I'm hoping they have some comments to make as well, but really, just thank you. We will be getting our comprehensive comments back to you, which shouldn't be too comprehensive because I think we really did get to pretty much everything we were hoping to get to, with a few minor exceptions, and we'll be getting that to you probably by the end of this, definitely by the end of this week.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments by board members? Seeing none, any members of the public who want to address the board on this master plan for Marthus Creek? All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good morning. Tony Lashbreak, Town Manager from Truckee. I just wanted to say thanks to Jennifer, and particularly the Corps for listening. Issues that came from the town staff included. First of all, it's important to recognize that in the Truckee-Tahoe area, our residents and visitors tend to love our outdoor recreation resources to their peril, and so the Corps has a difficult job in balancing the desires of the recreation community and the protection of their resource, and we recognize that. Kind of on the dog issue, we thought maybe once, a one-size-fits-all approach might not be the best approach. They, they received a lot of public comment on that issue, and they showed some flexibility in this second draft of the plan. The other issue for us, and it's important that you recognize that this facility is not in the town of Truckee. It's close to the town of Truckee and used by a lot of our residents and visitors, but it, it could also provide long-term for some key trail corridors that might go from Placer County into the town of Truckee to the Legacy Trail in and around the dam and headed north. And we, we pointed those out. They've, they've accommodated those, and we're happy with that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I just want to thank Tom-
I'm sorry. Well, we know who you are for the record.
I apologize for that. Good morning. Kimberly Pruitt with Congressman Tom McClintock's office. I just want to thank Tom Urki from the Army Corps for his leadership on this issue. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay. So when we came, we had some issues come to our attention from constituents on the, especially the off-leash dog issue, unleashed dog issue, and also the trail connectivity with the plan. We contacted Supervisor Montgomery, so thank you Supervisor. Also, the town of Truckee to discuss the issues. And the Corps was very cooperative, and the stakeholder meetings that we've had have really come to a good result with the master plan. And so I really appreciate Tom's leadership, and, and thank you Jennifer as well, and everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, Mike Stottemeyer, General Manager of the North Star CSD. Tom kind of glazed over it, but he, he mentioned the fact that the Mars Valley Trail project is now a permitted facility within the, the corridor and the project. And it wasn't before. So with this new amended or updated plan, we now actually have or will get the ability to build this Placer County facility for which we've already spent over a million dollars in planning and design and effort into. So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize the significance of that particular step with the update of this plan. Thank you.
Anybody else on the Martus Creek lake master plan update? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for the presentation. There's no action required by our board at this time, so we'll go ahead and move on to our 10 o'clock timed item, sticking with the theme of trails and connectivity and all those fun things. We'll move on to our Shared Youth Path. Implementation status for the Resort Triangle area of Eastern Placer County.
That's correct, Chairman Yul. Thank you again. Peter Kratz for the Record with Public Works here to give this next item. And there is a little bit of crossover with this. We'll talk a little bit today about the Mars Valley Trail, which is an integral part of the Resort Triangle Trail Network that this is the focus of this item today. So again, an overview of trails that are completed and planned in what we call the Resort Triangle, the area of Placer County. Let's see. And so what I want to cover and walk you through today are these items. First, talk about geographic setting. If you can picture, and I'll show you a map here in a minute, but you can picture that the roadwork setting for the Resort Triangle is 89 between Tahoe City and Truckee, 267 from Truckee to Kings Beach, and then along the North Shore, 28 between Kings Beach and Tahoe City. That's what we commonly refer to as the Resort Triangle in Eastern Placer County. And what I want to again do is an overview of the trails that are out there today and the ones that are, that are completed as well. And get into, you know, number two here, the basis for the trails really is to complete a Class One shared-use non-motorized path network to connect communities and enhance recreation with less reliance on the personal automobile. The third item really is to show you that we are getting trails done, and we're getting them done kind of one mile at a time, as I call it. It used to be a lot of trail efforts in the past up here, and I think nationwide, where you wanted to get 10 miles done at a time. And I just, we've known, we've learned that it just doesn't happen that way. With all the different layers we've got to get through, we, we do them short, shorter sections to gain momentum, and I'll talk a little bit about that today. So it's just more strategic to break these trails into smaller parts. And so we'll show you some trails that are recently completed. Funding, funding is daunting. I think in the board memo, I show a $65 million number to complete the trails, to complete that network. But I think again, from a nationwide perspective and this regional perspective, we're seeing trails get on the ground and the grant that we, grants that we can compete for at the state and federal level, they're out there. People want to see trails. People want to get out there and recreate more and be fit. And also use trails as an alternative way to get around as opposed to the personal automobile. Finally, talk a little bit about trails that are ready, potentially this year and next. And then do a big shout out to all the agencies and their staff for all the trail efforts around the Resort Triangle. I mean, it's a, it's a huge list that I'll show you at the end, but I think it's important really to show the, the integration, the coordination happening between the different agencies up here in North Lake Tahoe. So with that, I'm going to move you to the next slide, and I'm going to hang out here for a while, and I'm going to do some pointing, and hopefully I won't lose you. But again, show you what's been done and what's to be achieved in the Resort Triangle. Essentially, you see on the slide, that's the highway network that I've talked about earlier, North Lake Tahoe, town of Truckee up here with the town-county line running across there. This network is, is really, it's, it's big, it's part of a bigger trail picture to one day circle Lake Tahoe with a Class One trail system. It's been done in other jurisdictions around the lake. So that's important, too. It's also important that it's not just this trail network along the highway necessarily, but connecting into resorts like North Star, Squaw Valley, and other, other locations where you need that connection to communities as well. So between Tahoe City and North, and the North Public Utility and Tahoe City Public Utility Districts, the North Star Community Services District and Placer County, these, those are all the main implementers. We have about 27 miles of trail on the ground. And I'll point that out that, you know, the oldest section of trail is really led by the Tahoe City PUD, and it runs from Dollar Hill down West Shore all the way down to almost what's called Meeks Bay, Meeks Bay, down in Elro County. And then it wraps along the Truckee River north all the way up to Squaw Valley. That whole section is about 19 miles of trail. The other trail component we have done and on the ground for a number of years is led by the North Tahoe PUD, North Tahoe Public Utility District, and Placer County, what's called the Pine Drop Trail, and it goes from their Regional Park over to 267. And we also have some trail connections recently done by Placer County with the Snow Creek Restoration Project and then NT PUD's project along National Avenue. That's about five miles. Squaw Valley Trail, we all know about it, I believe. It's about two and a half miles, really led by the Department of Facility Services. And it's one of those trails that now is getting maintained in the winter for snow because it is so popular year-round. And then a recent section in Martus Valley, led by the North Star Community Services District, is this right up here on the county line, about a third of a mile that they did back in late 2014 to extend the trail system that already exists in town of Truckee. Again, with this idea that we take this whole trail, we build it all the way to the lake. So that kind of gives you that framework of about 27 miles of trail done to date. To finish this whole network, we need to do about another 30 miles of trail. And I'll first say that the town of Truckee is doing their part to, to connect the triangle up there at the top of the triangle with their trail network that they're working on. And then what I want to break into pieces here, this next big piece, led by county staff primarily with SEDRA, and now Public Works and Facility Services. We have the Truckee River Legacy or Access Trail that runs from the end of the existing trail at Squaw Valley along the Truckee River, which will run all the way up to the county line near West River Street along 89. This has become a higher priority project than it has in the past. We started out as a county with a programmatical environmental document that's not complete yet. We're focusing in now to kind of speed things up. We've got some new funding at play to, to move this thing along, continuing to work with SEDRA staff, facility staff, and public works staff to look at this eight miles, how we, how we can logically break it into, up into independent pieces because trying to do a whole eight mile, eight mile section of trail at one time is difficult at best. We have two Forest Service Campgrounds along here that we could have connections to and break it into, say, three parts over time. So that's, you know, that's a kind of a description of how we look at these longer trails that we can't do them all at once. So again, a big priority for the county, moving forward on that one. The next one I want to talk about, I'm going to get really small again, but it's a very important gap that still exists in downtown Tahoe City right here. It's part of the Lakeside Trail System. We still have a gap there between Fanny Bridge and Commons Beach. It's about a third of a mile long. We are launching a mobility study in downtown Tahoe City. I think some folks may have mentioned that earlier today. It's very important that we close that gap so we have a, a path separated from the highway. We get a lot of use down there already on the trail that goes, comes from Dollar Hill down to Commons Beach and then to the south. So we want to complete that gap. Important one, one-third mile. The next pieces of trail really are out in Martus Valley. Again, we see us, North Star CSD completed this third mile up here. The next big section is going all along here, up to the Lake Tahoe Basin boundary. And that is about 10.5 miles, I believe. And it also will tie into the village of North Star, very key to, to tie into communities and resort areas. We applied for what's called the Federal Land Access Program funding for this trail section. We did not make the shortlist, but I'm, I'm confident that we will continue to pursue and find the funding to make this trail happen. And I'll talk about what pieces will, will get done on this section hopefully in the next couple of years. The next piece is about two and a half miles to go from here to here to connect in with the North Tahoe Regional Park, coming from the top of the basin down into the basin. And then finally, what we call the North Tahoe Trail, which essentially goes from Dollar Hill, where the Lakeside Trail ends, all the way over to the Regional Park. And that's about eight miles. So we're working on a piece of this down at the south end. I'll talk a little bit more about that today. And then planning this rest of the section all the, to get all the way to the North Tahoe Public Utility District Regional Park. And finally, I'll mention that, a couple more trails we don't really show here, but trying to make that connection around the lake within our jurisdiction. We want to have a, a separated trail system through Kings Beach, even though we're doing lots of great things in Kings Beach. We've got Class Two trails on the highway, which is a great amenity to have for the serious cyclist. We want to have that separated Class One system, whether it be a boardwalk or something along the beach. Again, that makes that, extends that pedestrian connection all the way to the state line, and then Washoe County takes off from there around the lake. That's about six miles. And one more trail that's on the cusp of being built, we have another gap down here. Tahoe City PUD is leading what, what we call the Missing Mile, which is along Homewood. That's the Class One Trail just kind of terminates on the highway near Homewood Resort. We want to see that section done. Tahoe City PUD is working very closely with Caltrans to see that chunk of trail get done. So that is a, a broad overview, not to confuse you, but really lay the groundwork of what's been done, what we're, what we're looking to achieve and working with different, at different agencies up here, including ourselves. Quickly, I want to just walk you through kind of the basis for these trails. I think it's important when we apply for grants, we show the world, well, what is it all about? What's, what's your basis for doing these trails? And, and I, I essentially rely on three documents when we apply for grants and, and kind of guiding, guiding principles and where these alignments and where these trails should go. The first one is, is really for the trails in the basin, it's the TRPA Bike and Pedestrian Plan. This is 2010, but I think it's going, it is going through an update right now. And these are just some goals highlighted about how, you know, the trail, the trail plan from TRP encourages biking and cycling and establishing these trails and establishing trail network around the lake. So we rely on that for our trail alignments that are in the basin portion of Placer County. The next one is really related to the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association and the TOT dollars that we get. And really, these are just excerpts out of our Tourism Development Master Plan that talk about the need for trails in North Lake Tahoe. And then the third one is our own Placer County Mission Statement for Open Space and Trail Program throughout the county. And we rely on this, too, as a, as a guiding principle for doing trails across Placer County. So those are our, kind of our, our three guiding documents. What I'll roll into now is just give you a sense of what's been done recently and what we had hoped to achieve in the near future on getting that 30 miles done that's still to be completed. Really just go back to about 2012 and really show the importance of, this is down by 89 South and Lakeside Trail section that goes along West Shore. This is really showing, again, the, what I want to point out here is the Tahoe City Transit Center. We know that's a multimodal hub for public transit. We wanted to make sure that cyclists and Peds can get to the transit center without using their car. And this trail wraps out under the existing Lakeside Trail. So it's an important, whenever we have these trails, we want to make sure we have those connections to important public transit facilities. The next one is just to highlight the Lakeside Trail in Tahoe City, the, the latest section done in 2012, which really goes from kind of east of Commons Beach, Commons Beach over to the east side of town. Beautiful trail along the river, and it gets a lot of use because you've got such great views of the lake, and it gives you that alternative way to get around as opposed to the sidewalks that go along the highway. Next one are, these are ones we just completed by Placer County last year with Snow Creek. We had the Snow Creek groundbreaking, or the ribbon cutting last year. And just to highlight that up in there, we've got paved trails that connect with a North Tahoe PUD Trail System that hooks into the Pine Drop Trail that I showed earlier that makes its way all the way over to Kings Beach and 267. So we're always looking for ways to make sure everything's connected. The Skilandia Park Boardwalk is just really to show that when we go in and do environmental restoration projects, it's not just about cleaning up the environment and restoring the environment anymore. It's really about making sure pedestrians have a way to get from one place to the other. In this case, there's a, there's a state park that's run by the Tahoe City PUD, and there was an old trail there that we obviously upgraded with this elevated boardwalk to protect that SEZ, that webbed area. And then want to just go into Martus Valley again. This is that third mile that was completed just last year, just south of the town line into Placer County, really gaining that momentum. It's a short section of trail, but it's that section of trail that's going to move, help move this, the trail ultimately across Martus Valley and up to North Star. So that was a big accomplishment led by the North Star Community Services District. Won't, won't expect you to read all this. It really just kind of highlights the, the, the big need for funding going forward for all these different trail sections that we need to accomplish that 30 miles. And I will just talk a little bit. I talked about FLAP. We are out there with our, with our sister agencies and our counterparts, always looking for funding and trying to be coordinated as much as we can and not being independent when we pursue these dollars. The FLAP is a good example where we work closely with the North Star Community Services District to apply for that, that federal grant. When those opportunities come up, again, we'll do that. And daunting, no doubt, but I, again, I will say from a national perspective, the money's out there, we just have to be poised to go for it. One thing I'm not going to talk a lot about today, but I do want to point out and just be a realist here is that, you know, the maintenance of existing and proposed trails is not an easy answer, and it's not my focus today. But I will say that the routine annual maintenance on our existing trails is about $10,000 to $15,000 per year, per mile. And about $300,000 per mile when you have to rebuild the trail 20 years later. There's been a robust effort working with the Resort Association and particularly Ron Trebus, and then with our CEO staff, particularly Cadence and Jennifer Merchant, to lay the gra, lay the framework for a long-term operation of maintenance solutions. Obviously, up here, the main sources of funding are transient occupancy tax dollars and park dedication fees from the Department of Facility Services. But I'll quickly tell you that these fund sources cannot do the job well. So there is definitely a big effort within the Resort Association committees to look at this maintenance picture. It, it's always goes without saying, it's easier to get those capital dollars to build new facilities, and it's the maintenance piece that's always the, the hard nut that follows. But I think, you know, I think we'll get there, like people said earlier about other subjects, it takes a village, and I think working closely together, we'll figure out that, that maintenance piece. Finally, I'll just close up, and I'll show a few shots of projects that are right on the cutting edge to be completed this year or next. This is one that's come to your board a few times, led by Placer County. It's the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail, and it's really, it's extending the existing Lakeside Trail at Dollar Hill, which is right here, and making that push towards Kings Beach. This is about two and a quarter miles that connects Dollar Point over to the Cedar Flat Neighborhood, terminates there, but with the idea to continue another trail project north of here and ultimately to the Regional Park in the next few years. So we're hoping that either this year we could break down, or next year we have, what we did receive FLAP dollars, what we call FLAP, Federal Land Access Program dollars a couple of years ago, to help support this trail moving forward faster than we anticipated. So we're, we're jazzed about that. This one, we talked a lot about today with the Master Valley Master Plan Update. This is out in Martus Valley, but it really is just to show you that a couple of trails should be ready by this year or, yes, this year or next. Mike Stottemeyer might be able to speak to it, but a small section of trail that's outside the core land to extend about six tenths of a mile to the core boundary on the north side. And then when we get through the core approval process and, and, and all of that and what it, what's called a federal document, we can hopefully build the next section of trail across the core land, which is about two miles. And that will hopefully happen between this year and next year. I can't not do a presentation without a little bit of an engineering shot of a typical cross-section of what we're talking about here. It's typically a 10-foot wide paved trail. The thing I want to point out here is that we really, we try to follow what are called Class One standards to keep that grade 5% or less wherever we go to maximize the number of users and maximize the number of user groups. That's what we're really talking about. There's plenty of trails out here in the world of North Lake Tahoe and, and, and for the avid mountain biker and, and those folks and people that want to be on the highway and be the serious cyclist, this, these trails are all about getting as many people out there as we can, out of their cars, and doing it from a, a recreation perspective as well. So finally, just spend a couple of minutes. I, I do want to make sure I shout out to a number of people. You know, I can't say enough about the collaboration that occurs on a regular, consistent basis between all the agencies desiring the same thing at the end of the day. I do want to shout out to folks and their ongoing efforts to make these, to make sure that these trails, these trail projects happen. And that's, you know, that's what these folks are doing with these, all these agencies. And it is, it seems like a long list, but I'm sure I'm going to forget some. I mean, it is, it's almost a short list when, when you talk about the, the property owners that we work with, whether they're private or public, like the Forest Service on the public side, things like that. But I've mentioned this before, the North Star Community Services District, Mike Stottemeyer and Eric Martin, their crew and their efforts in Marthis Valley, helping trails get established across Marthis Valley. The North Lake Tahoe Resort Association, Ron Trebus, Sandy Evans Hall and their crew with the funding that we have used for various trail planning and trail construction efforts in North Lake Tahoe. The North Tahoe Public Utility District, Will Stettler and the new General Manager, Dwayne Whitelaw, working closely with them for trails in their jurisdiction. The Tahoe City Public Utility District, really a leader with Cindy Gupseson, Matt Homolka and their crew with managing and establishing the Lakeside Trail System over in the Tahoe City area. Jamie Wright, Steve Tashara with the Transportation Management Association, they're the letter-writing crew, they're always supporting us and supporting all the different agencies in getting these trails completed. The California Tahoe Conservancy, longtime agency, when I first came on with the county, of getting lots of dollars for environmental improvement projects in Placer County, but also giving us money for acquisition of lands we need for trail projects. And so I, I, I need to mention Patrick Wright, Lisa O'Daly and Sue Ray Ireland with their crew and their staff. TRPA, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, Nick Haven, Alfred, uh, Nick Haven, Judy Weber, Karen Fink, they're, you know, they are a very robust group, putting together the trail bike master plan and trying to get us all to work together for trails being established in the basin. Tahoe Transportation District, Carl Hasty, Alfred Knotts, working closely with them on the federal money we received for the Dollar Creek Project and the Meeks Bay Trail, which is in El Dorado County, but again, it's making progress for getting around the lake. A couple more shout-outs, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, Tom was up here today, working closely with him to make the Marthis Valley Trails happen. Town and Truckee, instrumental in, in making those connections between Placer County and the Town of Truckee. They've been a leader for establishing a, a great trail network in their jurisdiction, and we're trying to do the same thing on our side. Finally, our staff at Placer County, I really want to mention folks with Public Works, Brian Stewart, John Mitchell and Kansas McGane, working hard on the trails in our jurisdiction, that are working closely with the Department of Affiliate Services folks, between John Ramirez and Andy Fisher. You know, park dedication fees are, are, are part of this whole solution that come from, from DFS. And so we've, we've looked at them and, and continue to have a collaboration between our two departments, closer now more than ever, as we all know. And finally, SEDRA, Stacy Wydrer and Paul Thompson, they've been a big part of the Truckee River Access Plan, continuing to make efforts there and, and make that a high priority project. And so I'm sorry if I missed anyone out there in the crowd or that's not here, and thank you to your Board of Supervisors for supporting our efforts in the past and, and today and hopefully into the future. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your time. Peter, Board members, have any questions or comments? Supervisor Montgomery.
Peter, thank you, very comprehensive overview. One group that I wanted to mention that is not up there is the Squaw Valley PSD, which has been really, really helpful in keeping the Squaw Valley bike path open during the winters. I shouldn't call it a bike path, I'm sorry, multi-use path. And that got very, very heavy use over the last couple of winters. Takes traffic off the road, helps employees get to and from work safely. It's just been a phenomenal project to, to, to do that snow removal in the winter. I wanted to go back to one of your slides, you don't actually need to go back to the slide, you had a slide up about estimated trail project costs. There's two that I would just really strongly encourage, those two pieces to focus on. One is the Tahoe City Commons to the Outlet Dam, it's a third of a mile, it's only, only a million bucks. I'm going to say it because I like to make myself popular with county staff, but if we knocked the old fire station down, we could get that trail built like that. Sunnyside to Lower Sequoia, that's about point six-five miles, again, around a million dollars. If, if we could get those two pieces completed, we have basically Meeks Bay all the way through Tahoe City to Dollar Hill, we have Meeks Bay all the way along the Truckee River to Squaw Valley and into Squaw Valley. We have complete, a, a complete trail system there that is just going to be so much easier and so much safer for people to use. So my comments are, I love that we have a vision for over thirty miles, but I really think we should focus on that. Really, it's one mile between the Tahoe City Commons to the dam and Sunnyside to Lower Sequoia that just makes that whole existing system so much more usable and safe. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Other Board members? And any members of the public?
Wasn't planning to speak, but since I'm here, I will. Tony Lashberg, Truckee Town Manager, and five quick comments, just kind of along the collaboration theme. Peter and Ken Graham have been great, working with the town and all the regional entities, and it's, really feels like a team effort on this resort triangle trail system. I don't know that Peter mentioned the mouse hole, which we are mucking around in right now, you might have noticed on your way up. So hopefully by the end of this summer, we'll have a mini mouse hole that will create a, one of those Class One Multi-Use Trails from West River Street to Donner Pass Road, also serving Sierra College, so kind of a key part of the connections that are necessary. And, you know, thanks to a ton of partners, including Placer County, in making that project happen, Caltrans as well. Wanted to bring to your attention that we are starting to point west with our Truckee River Legacy Trail. You might know that our voters passed a quarter cent sales tax last June for trail maintenance and construction. We project that's going to generate about ten million dollars over the ten-year period of that tax, mostly for construction, but also for maintenance. So definitely, Priority One is the Truckee River Legacy Trail from downtown Truckee West to connect with your trail. So just wanting to heighten that interest and, and it's, you know, I think we haven't designed this yet, but it's very likely that that bridge crossing will want to be somewhere in Placer County and not the Town of Truckee, just because the flood plain is, is pretty wide within the town. So lots more work to do together there. Finally, we are working on completing our Class Two Bike Way Network, and although we're not really talking about Class Two Bike, Bike Lanes today, West River Street is in our horizon for next season construction. And West River Street is shared between the town and Placer County. We would certainly look to your direction to prioritize that for funding so we can complete that entire project, working collaboratively. So we also have Brockway Road, the former Highway Two Sixty-Seven in our sights, there's a little bottleneck on part of that, we want to get that completed. That, that will start to really make a very nice loop for, for high-performance cyclists that the Class One Path may not. So just to put that in your thinking. And then finally, just a heads up, with the passage of our sales tax, we thought we'd try plowing and maintaining our Truckee River Legacy Trail from downtown to Glen Shire, which is in the east end of Truckee, this season. And we didn't plow it a lot because it didn't snow a lot, but because it didn't snow a lot, people were looking for things to do. The use of the trail over the winter has been phenomenal, so we may have created a monster, but we're planning to budget moving forward to do that, so just FYI. Thank you very much.
Anybody else want to address the board on this item? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much for the update, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will go ahead and move into our first department item, which is a quick administrative services item. Always exciting to talk about asphalt acquisitions. We'll go ahead and jump into that. Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning Supervisor.
You have to turn on, there you go.
Good morning Supervisor.
Hope you don't get shocked when the water gets on.
We didn't anticipate getting cleaning services as well.
I was thinking, you know, with that brief little interlude right there.
Good morning, Brett Wood, your Purchasing Manager, and with me is Mr. John Manning, also of the Procurement Division. We're here today to request your approval to approve both a competitive bid to Vulcan Materials of Roseville and Grass Valley and a negotiated agreement with Tykert Aggregates of Truckee, California for the as-needed purchase of asphalt concrete products in the maximum aggregate amount of nine hundred thousand dollars for the period of April twenty-eighth of this year through March thirty-first of next year. We're also asking for your approval at this time to, to approve three additional one-year extensions of those agreements in a not, and with that, and not to exceed amounts of ninety thousand dollars in change orders or increases over the course of the next three years. And we're asking for your approval to, for, to authorize the purchasing manager to sign those documents and to transfer funds between those blanket purchase orders as needed. Mr. Manning will explain a little bit about the bid process we went through, and then we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you.
All right, good morning. The Department of Public Works Road Maintenance Division requires annual blanket purchase order agreements for the as-needed purchase of asphalt concrete products to support the department's road maintenance operations for both eastern and western Placer County regions. The department's most recent agreements expired on March thirty-first of this year with no further renewal options available. As the result, we developed and solicited Bid Number One Zero Four Two Zero, which represented the department's most current requirements. Electronic bid notices were sent out to twenty-four potential bidders, and the bid was also posted on the county's website. Thirty vendors viewed the bid online, however, we only received one responsive bid from Vulcan Materials, who submitted pricing for the western Placer County regions from their Roseville and Grass Valley plant locations. The department still required a blanket purchase order agreement and supplier for the eastern Placer County region. So instead of going out to bid again, Procurement Services successfully negotiated a renewal with Tykert Aggregates of Marthis Valley, who is the department's most recent supplier of asphalt concrete products for the eastern Placer County region. The pricing offered by these vendors appears to be consistent with current market conditions. And so with that, we're asking your board's approval to award, or issue the blanket purchase order agreements in the maximum aggregate amount of nine hundred thousand dollars, and also authorize the purchasing, purchasing manager to sign the resulting agreements. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
To what do we attribute the low participation rate respondents?
I'm sorry?
The low participation rate amongst respondents?
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, you know, we reached out to some of the thirty vendors that viewed the bid online. A majority of them aren't suppliers of asphalt concrete products, they know, or at least work with the two to three core suppliers who are Knife River Construction, Granite Construction, Vulcan Materials and Tykert. So of those three, Tykert had a follow-up with one of their bid specialists, so they didn't, they weren't registered in the system, so they didn't know about the notice. We have some operational requirements that some of the core suppliers can't meet or match, where we may ask for a small load of asphalt concrete, and they're producing minimum requirements of two hundred and fifty tons. So for that, they chose not to respond.
Okay. All right, other Board members have other questions on the item?
Yeah, is that?
Supervisor Graham?
Yes, with regards to Vulcan, I've noticed that we've, that Vulcan has been primarily responsive in the last couple of times that we've put this out to bid. Is there any thought of because of the concerns that, or not the concerns, but because of the other individuals not being able to meet our criteria, going to sole source for them on that? To save the cost of the RFP?
I think I'll take that one, sir. The reason that we continue to put it out for bid every three years is just to test the market and see if any new firms have entered in or are potentially available and are willing to meet the requirements that we have, rather than just sole sourcing on an ongoing basis with one firm.
That's fair, thank you.
All right, any members of the public wish to address the board on this item before we take action? And seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for motion.
Move approval of Department Item Six A, One Through Four inclusive.
We have a motion, Montgomery, and a second was at Holmes. That was Duran, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm not hearing people today. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, thank you very much. All right. Item number seven is Community Development Resources Agency. This is an update by Crystal, there she is, hi.
Hello.
On the Tahoe Basin Area Plan.
Good morning. I don't know if this is on, can you hear, is it on?
See what happens when our sound guys come up to adjust the tables for us?
Well, good morning. Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services Division, and I'm going to provide you with an update on our efforts to update the county's community and general plans in the Tahoe Basin. This is known as the Tahoe Basin Area Plan. So since our last update to your board, we continue to work with our consultants to make some adjustments to the area plan based on direction that we received from TRPA, and really to ensure consistency with the TRPA regional plan. As reported back in January, one significant modification has really been to focus our efforts on outlining an environmental enhancement strategy for the area plan, and really to kind of outline the land use, the proposed land use changes with environmental improvement plans, while also maintaining the spirit and intent of the community's vision for the North Tahoe Basin area. We have prepared a draft plan that has been submitted to TRPA, and I'll get to that in just a minute. But before I do that, I want to talk about some outreach efforts that we have conducted. So we, we outlined the adjustments to the area plan, and we met with the plan teams, which are the citizen advisory groups. We met with them on February seventeenth, February eighteenth, and the twenty-fourth of February. The purpose of that was really to discuss those amendments and the adjustments, and then to outline the environmental enhancement strategy and align amendments to the regional plan. In general, the teams did provide positive feedback and support on the adjustment. I will point out that some team members commented, they felt that the proposed amendments were not consistent with the visioning they had done, and that they were really focused on the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach, and not so much the outlining communities, what we call village centers of Tahoe Vista, Carnelian Bay, and those little communities in West Shore. I would like to point out that while the main focus is definitely on the town centers, because that is really in line with the overall objective of the regional plan to provide redevelopment opportunities in the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach, we are preparing updates in the village center areas, which include allowances for mixed use in those small communities, as well as some updates to the county's design standards and guidelines for those areas. And then in addition, the outline that we put together for the area plan includes a second phase, where the county will come in and look at some land use and zoning changes to address non-conforming uses of some sites along the Truckee River that had previously been considered in the area plan, those have been taken out now, but we will address those in a future phase, as well as any property, we'll consider property owner, land use and zoning changes to address similar types of non-conforming uses throughout the, the basin area. So over the last couple of months, we have also outreach to the Technical Advisory Committee for the area plan, as well as individual stakeholder groups, including the North Tahoe Fire District, both PUDs, the State Park, the CTC, and the Lake to Save Lake Tahoe. And in general, the stakeholders have provided feedback that they're in support of these adjustments that have been made. We also provided a presentation to the North Tahoe Regional Advisory Committee at their April meeting and outlined really the, the overall approach that we're taking at this point. We did submit an admin draft policy chapter to TRPA in March for review and feedback, and based, based upon their initial review of, of TRPA staff, they did provide a very minor comment on that document, and we've been working to address those comments. In addition, on March twenty-fifth, the proposed area plan was presented to the TRPA Governing Board, what's called their ARPIC Committee, it's the Regional Plan Implementation Committee, made up of governing board members. And at that meeting, TRPA staff noted to their board that they had reviewed the plan policy piece, had little concern with the new approach that the county is taking, and also talked about its consistency- also talked about its consistency with the regional plan. And then in addition, ARPIC members also expressed general support of the approach we're taking. They seemed happy that the county is focusing more on an environmental enhancement strategy and that that approach is more in line with the TRPA regional goals to achieve environmental threshold gain. So in terms of where we're at now, the second piece of this is, the policy piece had been submitted to TRPA, the second piece is implementing ordinance chapter. That is being submitted along with a second admin draft of the policy piece to TRPA today. They have committed to a quick turnaround of that document, however, they would like to see a second admin draft of the ordinance piece. So after we, after they provide us their comments on the ordinance, we will refine the ordinance based upon the feedback that we received from TRPA and then we'll submit that back to them for a second, a second look. We've also prepared a draft notice of preparation for the environmental document, an EIR, EIS. TRPA has indicated they, this is a joint document between TRPA and Placer County. They will review that draft NOP after they've reviewed our ordinance, so we're waiting for their review until they complete the review of our ordinance. Two additional points I want to make too, in the staff report package attached was a parking study. This is an effort that was being conducted by the Department of Public Works and Placer County Planning. It's been going on for about six months and we just released that study to the public. It's on our webpage and we will also be conducting a public workshop. It just got scheduled for May 11th. It'll be at the North Tahoe PUD from 5:30 to 7:30 PM and we're going to be seeking input on the solutions that are identified in that study. I do have, Peter Kratz is here today if you have any specific questions on that study. He's here to answer questions and related to the solutions that have been identified. And then also with regard to the EIR, EIS, and the NOP, as we had previously reported to your board, that EIR will be analyzing what we call opportunity sites within the town centers of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. These are areas or sites where we've, that we've identified for potential environmental redevelopment and that's really for the purpose of trying to sort of boost, catalyze, or revitalize the communities of Tahoe City and Kings Beach. And on that note, the site in Tahoe City is the Henrickson site, also includes a portion of the golf course. And then in Kings Beach, the larger site is the former redevelopment BBLLC site. So those will be analyzed in the environmental document and outlined in the NOP that comes out, but what I would like to point out is that more recently, the developer of the Henrickson site has submitted a project application and so, and so we've identified that site as a pilot project in the area plan. And so it will be analyzed on a project level in the EIR, EIS, but I would like to point out that that portion of analysis is being funded by the developer. We've just finalized a contract or working to finalize a contract and scope for that piece of work and so we had to revise the scope of work for the NOP and so that it addresses both the area plan and the opportunity sites, including that pilot project level analysis. So with that, in terms of the schedule, we are still anticipating a spring release in the NOP. We're looking at, based upon the time that TRPA needs to review that ordinance, it's looking like a May 25th release of the public review draft area plan as well as the notice of preparation that will be out for a 60-day public release is what TRPA would like. And then with that, that puts us out to a draft EIR, EIS, and another draft area plan for public review out in late fall. And then we will begin planning commission deliberations and be to your board in early spring followed by TRPA's middle after that. And I'm happy to answer questions and again, if you have any specific questions on the parking study, we could address those as well.
Okay, questions by board members? I'm not seeing any lights fire up here, so let's throw it open to the public, see if anybody has any questions or comments on Crystal's presentation at this point.
Good morning, afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Steve DeSher, Sustainable Community Advocates. I just wanted to speak to one piece of the package that Crystal addressed and that's the parking study. I've read it, it's very, very good, very refreshing to see some of the out of the box thinking in terms of problems that have plagued us from the parking side in this community for many, many years. I think the recommendations are very good, very straightforward. I know that there's going to be challenges in implementing some of them, but I really encourage your board as well as your staff team that's worked on this to pursue those recommendations, both in the context of the area plan and elsewhere where it can be effective. So just want to commend the team that you have, consultants and your staff who prepared that report. Thank you.
Thanks Steve.
Anybody else?
All right.
All right, I'm seeing none. No action was required on that item, so we will.
Chairman Euler, if I could.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry Supervisor Montgomery, I can see a light.
That's okay, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Crystal for all her work on this. She's been incredibly responsive both to government entities like the TRPA but also to the community and also to my concerns that I've expressed through this process. Something that wasn't included in our package, but I'm hoping she can forward to all the board members, was the phasing process document that you created. I think that just really helps people understand the process moving forward. It doesn't have specific timing on it, but it's a, it's a great document to understand what is and isn't going to be covered within this update process. Great, I, that is available on our website and I'll get that out later today. Thank you. It's a great document, good work. Thanks.
And Supervisor Holmes, did you have something to add?
Oh, no.
That's all right. Okay, thank you very much Crystal, appreciate the update. We'll go ahead and move on to facility services. Going to talk trash for two items here. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning Chairman Euler, members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, I'm the Environmental Engineering Program Manager with Facility Services. I'm here this morning to seek direction from your board regarding the development of a bear resistant residential garbage can enclosure loan program for franchise areas two and three, which includes unincorporated Placer County east of Colfax to the Nevada state line. Proposed funding for the program would be the solid waste management enterprise fund reserves. Staff recently surveyed residents in this area to obtain information regarding the extent and the type of wildlife trash interactions or issues. The survey indicated that 67% of respondents had experienced wildlife interactions in their area related to garbage and of those, 69% noted these interactions occurred where garbage was not properly contained in a bear resistant enclosure. Approximately 40% of our current residences, or about 5,400 out of 13,500 residences, do not have bear resistant enclosures. And currently, bear resistant enclosures are required with new construction permits, but there is no requirement for existing homeowners. The cost of installing a typical enclosure is approximately $1,200 and the proposed loan program is intended to provide a cost-effective means for homeowners to install the enclosures. The staff reports include, the staff report includes a list of key terms for the proposed loan program, but I wanted to give you a few highlights in my presentation this morning. First, the loan is for $1,200 with 0% interest paid back over five years by adding a $22 fee to the monthly garbage bills. TTD, who is our garbage collection service provider in the area, will administer the loan program and there will be a $120 admin fee added to the loan amount paid back by the homeowner. TTD will ensure installation by a licensed contractor and proper placement of the enclosure. Only homeowners in good standing with their current garbage bills are eligible for the loan program and the number of loans will initially be limited to 100 per year on a first, first come, first served basis and staff will, will track that and report back to your board if, if that needs adjustment. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the program and receive any feedback you have for us.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, I, again, as always, want to start by saying thank you. The conflicts between wildlife and human trash is something we've been talking about for a couple of years and that full marks to you and to our partners at Eastern Regional Landfill TTUSD Co. Inc. Pretty sure that's what I write my check out to. To come up with, you know, an innovative way to, to help some of the people who, who already have homes, who may not be able to afford that $1,200 chunk honestly to put in a bear box, but very innovative thinking, great way I think to offer a benefit to us societally but also to wildlife and to individual homeowners. I liken this to the Air Pollution Control District's Woodstoke Replacement Program except that they actually give money to homeowners. In this case, this is a 0% interest loan payable back in really easily achievable chunks through your monthly garbage bill and just kudos to you for the out of the box or maybe the in the bear box thinking. Really appreciate your efforts on this and hope that staff will concur that we should continue with the development of this program.
Other questions by Supervisor McGurk?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our county council vets the whole loan process and make sure that we take advantage of any exemptions to existing laws with regards to finance and those kinds of things.
Yeah, yeah, we, we've had some discussions with them and we'll continue to do so as we put this, put the details to the, to the program.
Okay, thanks.
So my only question is in regard to the cost recovery. I see we're paying the administrative fee of $120 per loan. Is that a one-time fee? Is that paid at the beginning of the loan initiation? That's a one-time fee and is there a reason why that cost recovery was not built into the loan repayment? I realize we're doing a 0% interest, but.
Yeah, our intent is actually to have it built into the cost that the homeowner would pay and so essentially, TTD will work with contractors to install the, the bear enclosures. We will pay TTSD and then as, as they collect the, the funds, they will repay the county for our funds expended.
Okay, all right. I was a little unclear on the flow of funds, thank you, appreciate that. All right, seeing no other questions by board members, any members of the public want to address the board on this item? Let's see, she's heading the other way. Okay, I don't see anybody, so what is the pleasure of the board?
I am asked, I ask that we direct staff to proceed with the development of an optional residential bear resistant garbage can enclosure loan program in franchise areas two and three.
And just under discussion when it comes back for final adoption, just to clear delineation of flow of funds would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay, motion was Montgomery, second by Yagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. And item 8B is franchise fees.
Good morning again, Kevin Bell with Facility Services. I'm here to request that your board approve an amended and restated agreement for solid waste handling services with Tahoe Truckee Disposal Inc. and Placer County Eastern Regional Sanitary Landfill Inc. to provide a seven-year extension from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2022. The service, the service agreement is funded by garbage collection and processing fees for services provided in franchise areas two and three, which includes unincorporated Placer County east of Colfax to the Nevada state line. And second, to make a finding pursuant to the, to Public Resources Code 21080B8 that the fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are therefore exempt from environmental review. ERL and TTD have provided solid waste services in the area since the 1970s. ERL operates the Eastern Regional Material Recovery Facility and TTD provides garbage collection services. They've been great partners over the years and have worked with the county to minimize fee increases resulting in no tipping fee increases and only a 9% cumulative increase in garbage collection fees over the last eight years. The current agreement expires on June 30th, 2015 and over the last couple of years, we've been discussing a potential extension with ERL and TTD. During our initial conversations, we were looking at tipping fees of over $100 per ton had we simply extended the terms of the existing agreement. So we took a step back with ERL and, and took a hard look at the facility and the material coming into the facility. And based on the information that we gathered from some studies that we did, we determined that we could add specific equipment to achieve higher diversion and higher revenue from the recovery and sale of commodities that we had been missing. This led to the proposed agreement that includes ERL installing $1.2 million in new equipment, increased diversion from the facility, increased revenue for ERL to pay for the equipment, and increased revenues to the county to set us up to deal with coming regulations and also allowed us to lower the tipping fee at the facility from $77.50 to $76 a ton. And also allowed us to lower the processing fee paid to ERL from $58.38 to $52 per ton. As a result, instead of looking at tipping fees going over $100 by the end of the term, you know, we were actually able to lower the rate and it looks like based on our financial models, it will be able to maintain that, that lower rate through the term of this proposed agreement at $76 per ton. On the garbage collection side, the current fees will either remain the same or go down for fiscal year 2015, 16, depending on the level of service and moving forward, TTD will forego their COLA every other year for the term of the extension, which will also help to keep garbage rates low for our residents. In July, your board approved deal points that are included in the staff report. The agreement before you is based on those deal points, but I wanted to point out a few deal points that were modified or added since, since July. First, we plan to establish a new green waste tipping fee that will initially be set equivalent to the inert rate that we currently charge. Currently, clean green waste comes in at that inert rate, but separating that, that rate actually sets us up to track the green waste better and also sets us up to deal with, with current and coming regulations related to green waste. Second, in response to a survey we conducted to find out what's important to our residents, we added at no cost curbside collection of household batteries and small electronics. And finally, the original deal points included conversion to compress natural, natural gas for residue trucks that haul the residue waste from the facility to the Lockwood Landfill in Nevada. And based on follow-up discussions with ERL, it was determined that more air quality benefit would be realized in Placer County by converting the garbage collection route trucks to alternative technology vehicles rather than the residue trucks. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that your board has.
So just my question is the, is then the priority to change out the route trucks instead of the hauling trucks?
Exactly, yeah.
But same budgeted dollars or?
Yeah, exactly. So essentially, there was a value associated with conversion of those residue.
I get it.
Got it, yeah.
Got it. Okay, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, just wanted to point out that the Eastern Regional Landfill folks actually applied for and were granted through the Air Pollution Control District some clean air grant funding to help assist in that swap out. And one of the reasons that the, the Air Pollution Control District was so interested in doing that is because we would see the impacts here in California.
Right.
Rather, as much as we love Nevada.
Right.
Rather than in the state of Nevada. So it was just a win-win for everybody, including us frankly.
Yep.
Well, with the prevailing winds, cleaner here means cleaner there.
Yes, it does.
Works out well that way. Other questions by board members? Nope, okay, members of the public wish to address the board on this item? And seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it, oh, we do have someone, I'm sorry. That's what happens, you sit all the way back of the bowling alley there, I can't see you.
Good morning. Is this still morning?
It is.
Okay, Jeff Collins, Tahoe Truckee Disposal. We, we wish to thank you, the board and its staff for the opportunity to continue the serving the people of Placer County. We've worked well in concert with the county staff in the past and we look forward to a productive future as we tackle the ever emerging issues related to solid waste collection, processing, and recycling. And we give our compliments to your staff, they have served you well and we know they will continue to do so. Most of all, as, as I stand here, I want to say how grateful we are. This is our home, this is our community and we are very lucky indeed. We have never taken for granted what we have here, we don't ever want to do so. The beautiful environment we live in, the customers we serve, our neighbors. And so we look forward and to working hard to confirm the trust that you would place in us today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else approaching, we will entertain a motion on item 8B1 and 2.
I move approval of Facility Services Items 8B1 and 2. Do we approve an amended and restated agreement and then we make the finding pursuant to Public Resources Code 21080B8 that the fees are derived directly from the cost of providing services and are necessary to meet operating expenses required for making? expenses required for maintenance of service and are therefore exempt from environmental review.
Second.
Motion, Montgomery, second, Wygant. Without further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. We go ahead on to item number nine, A, Public Works Alpine Meadows Road, the Truckee River Bridge Replacement Project Construction Update. Woo-hoo!
Morning, Mr. Chairman. Board members, John Mitchell, Associate Engineer with Public Works and Project Manager on the Alpine Meadows Road Bridge Replacement Project. You've seen this item come about, about the last six years, from planning to the most recent construction award on February 24th, MCM Construction. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of what we're going to put in the ground. So, we're replacing the bridge. Just about everybody knows it's functionally obsolete at this point. We're bringing the new one up to currently designed standards, 50 to 75-year expected life expectancy. And it's functionally obsolete, it's, it's way too small. The new bridge will have proper shoulders and sidewalks. Project details, this, it's just not a bridge replacement. We're also extending the approach on Alpine Meadows Road about 1,400 feet, widening the road for a longer turn lane to take a left-hand turn on Highway 89. We're doing the same on, on Highway 89 to take a right-hand turn onto Alpine Meadows Road, and we're doing a signalized intersection at the intersection of Alpine Meadows Road and Highway 89, as well as drainage improvements along both Alpine Meadows Road and, and Alpine, and Highway 89. This is just a blown-up view of the, of the new bridge overlay and the intersection. You can see how much bigger it's getting. It's about 25 feet bigger than the existing bridge today, allowing for 12-foot proper lanes and, again, shoulders and raised sidewalks. Here's a project detail. The roadway on Alpine Meadows Road will have three travel lanes as today, but, again, extended further with four-foot shoulders. Bridge has three travel lanes, 12 feet, four-and-a-half-foot shoulders, and five-foot-plus raised sidewalks. Again, it's a signalized intersection, it's a better connection, more perpendicular connection with Highway 89, much safer crosser, crossing for the Truckee River Trail, which is right here. And, again, a signal there at the intersection. We've had a lot of partners in this project with the right-of-way to make this possible. Just want to give appreciation to the Eddie Oswaldo Encinas, the Casa Dina Building, in making this happen. We're, thanks to them, we're able to put a temporary bridge in downstream that I'll talk about on the next slide, or next couple of slides. Allows us to build this project in one season, which all the residents are happy about. We're building the parking lot up here because we are taking a temporary detour right through their parking lot, but we're, we're building the spaces for them. It's actually gone in the ground already and should be complete in the next two weeks. The Forest Service gave us a special use permit up here for our lay-down yard. Alpine and Squaw gave us this parcel here for, to move the boat inspection station that's usually up in this lot down to their lot so that we could have that as a lay-down area. Riveron Condos and Alpine Manor down here are, have been very nice to work with in, in letting us use Alpine Circle Road during construction as well as easements necessary to build our abutments in the bridge. And that goes for River Ranch as well, here in the yellow, is their property for construction Architecture and aesthetics, this is just rendering of what the new bridge will look like. We're, we're doing form liner, rock walls, metal railings, a simple metal plaque on the end of the, the rail for just, kind of classy, but, but keeping it pretty low-key. Construction's schedule is pretty aggressive. We started April 1st, we've been at it for almost a month now. We're going to be done October 15th. The temporary bridge detour should be in place by mid-June, if not sooner. We'll have traffic on the new bridge in September, and again, we're, we're hoping to wrap up end of the fall. This is just a, a, an overshadow of what the temporary bridge looks like and traffic it's going to be, happening in the summer. The bridge provides two lanes in and out. It provides a pedestrian, protected pedestrian crossing, and we will, we will keep access to all these, to this business for the whole summer. We've been, have an update, we'll, we'll have updates. Our website's not quite up and running yet, but it's pretty close on placeroose.com. I send out tweets at Alpine Bridge whenever anything changes for road closures, land closures, anything daily, and also have been providing the residents with email blast updates on the traffic control and what to expect. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. I'm really delighted to see this moving forward, though I expect to hear from one cranky constituent that it's loud all summer long, and that's Steve Caston, who lives right by this project, so...
You haven't blocked his calls yet?
I have not blocked his calls yet, but I'm, I'm thinking about it. Couple of very quick questions. It, it is a signalized intersection. Do you know what the signals are going to look like? Are they going to be standard pole-mounted? They going to hang from the center somehow?
They're pole-mounted. There's a pole on the Highway 89 side as you're facing, as you're facing 89 to the left, and then there's another pole on the corner, the southernmost corner of Alpine Meadows Road and 89.
Okay. And then, coming in from the south, just below River Ranch, there's a fairly substantial curve there. Are we planning on doing some road upgrades or at least some signage upgrades to, to let folks know that there's a, going to be a new signalized intersection? People, even though it's a 45 mile an hour zone, people tend to sort of fly through there?
I need an idea. There'll be permanent signs, so signal ahead.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, this was just an update. There's no action required by our board at this time, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And, oh, I apologize. I did not ask if there was anybody that had a question or comment on the bridge project. Okay, so we'll now go ahead and allow Will to step on up and talk to us about the State Transit Assistance Claim for Placer County in Tahoe, regional transit submitted to Placer County Transportation Planning Agency.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Board members?
Will Garner, Public Works Department. And this is our annual request for funds from the State Transit Assistance Fund to the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. It's $624,129, and it, it goes to both Tahoe Area Regional Transit and Placer County Transit. These funds are derived from the sales tax on diesel, and in the state, they are designated for transit purposes. And in order to receive the funds, your board needs to approve the claim and adopt the resolution, and then we would submit them to Placer County Transportation Planning Agency, and they would approve the funds in May, and we would have them as part of our annual operating funds for both transit operations. If there's any questions?
Any questions by board members? I don't see any questions by...
Actually, I have one.
I'm sorry, Supervisor Durant?
Yeah, how do we, 624,129, how do, how does the money split up?
It's, the, the split is $92,000 roughly to TART, $531,000 roughly to Placer County Transit. And the split on the, these funds is based on the actual fair revenue collected as a proportion in both systems. I should also mention, there's, there was another claim just like this earlier in the year that your board approved from the basin side of the county, from Tahoe Regional Planning Agency, that went entirely to Tahoe Area Regional Transit.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? No other questions by board members? Any members of the public want to address the board on this item? Okay, we're being asked to adopt the attached resolution. We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, so that motion was Holmes, correct? And second was Durant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. We will move on to item 10. This is a county executive item. This is the California Tahoe Alliance Memorandum of Understanding and Conservation Strategy Group Professional Services Agreement.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, I'm Kayden Smatiavich, Management Analyst II with the County Executive Office here in Lake Tahoe. And I come before you in the final minutes of this morning, seeking your authorization on two items. You've heard a lot about regional collaboration here this morning, and these two items continue that theme. The first item is authorization for your chair to execute a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the county, establishing Placer County's participation in the California Tahoe Alliance. The California Tahoe Alliance, or the Alliance for short, is a coalition of local governments, special districts, public agencies, and non-governmental organizations that have joined together to collectively advocate for state-of-California funding for a broad range of environmental, restoration, water quality, and supply projects here in the Tahoe Basin, while also supporting coordinated implementation of the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency's Environmental Improvement Program. As of today, the following agencies have joined the alliance: the City of South Lake Tahoe, the League to Save Lake Tahoe, the North Tahoe Public Utility District, the South Tahoe Public Utility District, the Tahoe City Public Utility District, and the Tahoe Fund. The California Tahoe Conservancy, TRPA, and the Tahoe Transportation District have joined the alliance as advisory members. Additionally, it is anticipated that Eldorado County will join the alliance in the coming weeks. The efforts, efforts of the alliance are not intended to replace advocacy efforts that any individual member of the alliance may already have in place, but instead to enhance those efforts and to utilize the collective influence of the alliance members to seek state funding for important environmental improvement programs and projects in the Tahoe Basin. There are a number of legislative measures that have been introduced during this legislative session for which Lake Tahoe Basin programs would benefit, including allocation of Proposition One funding, short and long-term allocations of cap and trade funds for forestry, wetlands, and sustainable communities projects, funding for allocations for near-shore monitoring programs, and aquatic, aquatic invasive species programs, that one always gets me, and an amendment to the state's transit funding program to provide a specific population designation for the Lake Tahoe Basin that takes into account the transit use of both our tourists and our residents. The memorandum, memorandum of understanding itself is not an obligation of funds and does not control or limit pursuit of other funding sources for any future project of Placer County or any other member of the alliance. Placer County may withdraw from the alliance at any time by providing written notice of our withdrawal. The second item I bring before you today is a request for your authorization for the county executive officer to sign a professional services agreement between Placer County and Conservation Strategy Group for advocacy services on behalf of Placer County as a member of the alliance. The term of the service agreement is May through October of 2015, and the total cost is $4,500. The agreement with Conservation Strategy Group specifies that the advocacy on behalf of the alliance must not be detrimental to other Placer County legislative priorities and initiatives. Additionally, it is the intention of staff, as we work on items supported through the alliance, to ensure that the needs of the county as a whole are addressed and represented that this, that there's proper balance recognized. I respectfully request your authorization on these two items, and welcome any questions you may have.
Board members have any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Hi, Kaydens, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wonderful to see you presenting.
Thank you, happy to be here.
And a couple of quick questions. The $4,500 is for this next six months, roughly. I, I note that there is a, a sentence in your report that says, "Each member of the alliance, unless prohibited by law, from engaging in the, the services of a paid advocacy firm is to contract individually with CSG for their respective portion of the advocacy services to be provided by the alliance." So that raises two questions for me. One, how do we, how do we expect to monitor the other groups that can buy into this, actually buying into it, so that we've not just put $4,500 towards something that other folks don't buy into? And then the second question is, which members of the alliance, if any, are prohibited by law from engaging in the services of paid advocacy firms?
Thank you for the question. To your first question, as far as the contributions towards the CSG services to represent the alliance as a whole, the, as the group was, was forming, there were discussions about levels of contribution, and, and I would note that we are at the second tier, which is a lower level of contribution, recognizing that we have other advocacy efforts that we are already funding, and so this was intended to be a supplement. Whereas some of the alliance members did not have advocacy contracts, and so they came in at a higher level. There is regional coordination among this, amongst this group, and, and I guess the easiest way is, CSG probably wouldn't do the work if they weren't getting paid. And so, each of the individual members have been executing individual service agreements with them. I believe we are actually the last to do so, again, anticipating that Eldorado County will be, will be joining in the next few weeks, and, and they would also execute that agreement. So I believe that we are the last to execute with CSG, and they have indeed begun their efforts on behalf of the alliance. To your second question about which entities would be prohibited, those are the members that I, that I indicated as advisory members, the Conservancy, TRPA, and the other that I'm not remembering off the top of my head, the Tahoe Transportation District, thank you. Because they are state-funded programs, they are prohibited for paying for advocacy services to lobby the state, so they're participating, actively participating as advisory members, but are prohibited from contributing financially to the advocacy contract. And that's actually one of the reasons that was separated out, the MOU, from, from the advocacy agreement, thinking that as time goes by, perhaps the advocacy efforts may take different turns, and there may be other advocates that are better suited, and so we wanted to have the MOU in place to continue that, and then the short-term contract for advocacy services this legislative session.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by board members?
I was just going to add...
Supervisor Durant?
I was just going to add a comment and say that there, there may be some other limitations based on their organization as a 501(c)(3) or (4), so that's something for, for our county council to address, but I just thought I'd bring that up. That's why I didn't see many of the groups that we've had make presentations here on that list.
Thank you.
And seeing no other board members, any member of the public want to address the board on this item prior to us taking action? Seeing none, bring back the board, what's the pleasure?
I move that we authorize the chair to execute the California Tahoe Alliance Memorandum of Understanding and authorize county executive officer to sign a professional services agreement between Placer County and CSG in the amount of $4,500.
Second.
All right, motion, Montgomery, second by Wygant. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having made it two hours and 50 minutes through our board meeting with little to no controversy, let's take up item B here and talk about the, the status update for the 15-16 Tourism and Promotions Budget.
Good morning. Is it still morning? Mr. Chair, members of the board, again Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office. I'm here with three different items today. One is a status report, and two others requesting direction and/or action. So, I'm, I'm going to get started. First, the status update on the Lake Tahoe Tourism and Promotions Budget, in which is contained the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Budget and various tourism-related services provided by the county. The second is a request for direction regarding the Resort Association recommended fiscal year 2015-16 transportation budget. And lastly, a recommended action for expenditure on capital equipment repair. So, the first item. This is in your packet, but I wanted to have it up on the screen so that the folks in the audience could see it as well. The total proposed 2015-16 Lake Tahoe...
The total proposed 2015-16 Lake Tahoe Tourism and Promotions Budget, as you see in front of you, is $8,135,164. This is a fund within the Placer County budget, and it contains several components, including the Resort Association contract for a proposed amount of $6.2 million. Tahoe services provided by Placer County, just under $1.5 million, and reserves from previous fiscal years dating back to 2008, 2009, $421,364. And finally, the fund's share of countywide charges, inclusive of countywide systems charges, and general liability insurance, for a total of $17,821,000. This table also appears in your packet and includes the line item services that compose the Lake Tahoe Tourism services provided by Placer County portion of the fund. I just wanted to kind of scan through these, and it actually kind of, it goes on to the next page, but I'll get started on this section here. As referenced in the staff report, we have made a concerted effort over the past several years to minimize, and where possible, reduce this portion of the fund in order to set aside the maximum amount possible for visitor-serving capital projects. As the staff report explains, the line item has been reduced by nearly $420,000 since its peak in fiscal year 2009, 2010. And I think it's actually on the previous slide. You can see here that with the reduction in TART bus system service and animal control expenses, and the elimination of the facility's administrative charge, shows up on the second page, the year-over-year savings is proposed to be $52,498. That savings rolls directly into the Resort Association portion of the Lake Tahoe Tourism and Promotions Budget. The County Resort Association contract also imposes maximum service cap increases equal to regional CPI growth percentages on many of the services provided by county departments. As an example, and is it on this page or the previous? Of course, none of it lines up right, or I just can't find it, well, whatever. We know that the Sheriff's Department's actual cost for services under the July 3rd and 4th line item is $65,000, but because of the cap, the budget only increased for the fiscal year 15-16 by $2,400 year-over-year. So, related to the Resort Association portion of the budget, thank you for not having to use that. We are in the second year of a two-year contract cycle right now, or in 15-16 we will be. The county budget provides the Resort Association with the estimated budget figure on April 1st, so that's been accomplished, and we've had two meetings with them since then. The first was staff to review the overall Lake Tahoe Tourism and Promotions Budget, and the second was staff and their executive committee just yesterday to discuss possible second-year amendments to the contract, including the identification of the specific dollar amount of $6.2 million. So this concludes the budget status report portion of the presentation, and I'm just wondering if you have any questions so far.
Okay, any questions by board members on the budget portion of it? Nope, okay, any members of the public, questions or comments on what's been presented? All right, we'll go ahead and proceed to the first item where you're looking for a little direction here.
Yes, thank you. So now on to the request for direction. The total amount recommended by the Resort Association for the transportation program budget is $971,430. As I explained in the staff report, because these expenditures require advanced planning and actually start prior to the beginning of the fiscal year and approval by your board, we're requesting some direction now regarding the proposed programs. There are no new services being proposed for the next fiscal year. As highlighted on the screen in yellow, the North Lake Tahoe Water Shuttle Program received mixed, although ultimately majority, support by the Capital Investment and Transportation Committee and Resort Association Board and Staff, including two conflicting committee actions that are outlined in the staff report. The North Lake Tahoe Water Shuttle Program was approved by your board initially as a three-year pilot transportation service for the summer seasons of 2012 through 2014. The Resort Association subcontracts with the Regional Transportation District, excuse me, Tahoe Transportation District, or TTD, which solicited proposals, selected an operator, and manages the operator contract. The Resort Association also subcontract with the nonprofit Trucking North Tahoe Transportation Management Association for program management and marketing. I'm gonna scoot on to the next slide here about the Water Shuttle Program. The three-year pilot program did not meet planned ridership, operational, or cost assumptions during the term of operation, and it also did not meet agreed-to metrics for TOT funds allocated to transit programs. In an analysis that supported initiation of the three-year pilot program, program ridership was estimated at between 22,000 and 26,000 riders per season for the one-boat system that was operated over the three-year period. There was also a two-boat system that was considered, but that was discarded prior to operation of the service. There was a 10% ridership increase for last summer's service over the prior season, but ridership still only topped out last year at 3,165 one-way trips and less than 10,000 riders over the course of the three-year program. The program was planned to serve the communities of Tahoe Vista, Carnelian Bay, Tahoe City, and the West Shore. Tahoe Vista was served the first two years of service, and I think it was the first year and a half of service because the low water prohibited the Tahoe Vista portion of the route in the middle of the second year, and it did not provide service to Tahoe Vista in the third year due to low water at the two potential docking locations. And it's unknown whether all of those communities will be served this year, although it is currently planned for, and I think, given current water levels, it could occur, but perhaps by the end of the summer, some of the sections may need to be eliminated. The initial program was approved by your board in April 2012, was $380,000 to fund three years of service, due to lower-than-expected ridership and higher-than-budgeted expenses. In order to complete the full three-year program, an additional allocation of $140,000 was approved by your board in December 2013, for a total of $520,000 allocated out of the TOT fund to the program. According to information provided in the Resort Association's Capital Investment Transportation Committee Packet, the actual overall pilot program cost was $497,000, with an average of 30 riders per day at an average cost of $80.97 per passenger trip each way. The TOT subsidy of last year's program was $153,633, with an average daily ridership of 34 passengers at a cost of over $50 per passenger in each direction. It is important to note that these program expenses are not inclusive of Resort Association or Tahoe Transportation District overhead costs for program management and monitoring. Currently, the Tahoe Transportation District does not charge for those services. The TMA, which manages the contractor directly, does have a charge that's inclusive in that budget. In comparison, the total cost per passenger trip for TART bus service, which has a broader service footprint, is $9.02 per passenger, inclusive of administration and overhead So, assessment of the, that's the assessment of the pilot program, and now on to some concerns about the proposal for this year. The proposed allocation of $149,000 for next summer's service reflects a 2% decrease from last year's costs due to allocation of between $10,000 and $15,000 in TOT marketing dollars and a proposed fare increase. While this has a positive impact on the total infrastructure account dollars transferred to the transportation account to pay for the provided service, it has minimal net impact to the total TOT share of the subsidy. While the Water Shuttle Program provides a unique mode of transportation and an opportunity for visitors and locals to get out on the lake, in the future, there is also an opportunity for the Water Shuttle meeting with the Cross-Lake Shuttle. That shuttle is in the environmental review stages, and while funding was initially identified for the Cross-Lake Shuttle, the larger ferry system, it has not yet been allocated. A difference of opinion remains regarding whether or not the continued allocation of TOT funds to the Water Shuttle Program is the best use of limited resources. As such, county staff recommends that the funds not be allocated to this program out of the 2015-16 infrastructure account, and that it remain budgeted, that the funds remain budgeted as available for 2015-16 capital projects. Staff seeks direction from your board on this program and the whole of the proposed transportation program budget. As stated in the staff report, should your board act to include the Water Shuttle service as proposed, we do recommend that at a minimum you include the metrics that the Resort Association Board recommended that includes ridership increases and TOT reduction of expenses in future fiscal years. So at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions by board members? Supervisor Montgomery?
I did have one quick question. I think you said that the program this last year had a 10% increase in ridership?
Over the previous year.
Over the previous year.
It was, I think, 20, about 2,900 the previous summer, and about 3165, exactly.
Okay, so what, I don't know if you know the answer to this, or maybe somebody from the Resort Association Board should respond, but I'm wondering why, then, that their recommendation is a 5% ridership increase? I would think that we would at least want to match, if not exceed, last year's increase, since our ridership numbers are still so low, and we really are trying to get to those higher ridership numbers.
You may want to ask the Resort Association that. I think really the thought is, is that it's an easier target, and it's been difficult for the ridership to increase over time, and they don't want to set a target that was too high that would create a situation where it wasn't funded again in a future year. So we wouldn't be back having this discussion again. That's my best answer.
Okay, and then, so this has been, we're calling it a three-year program, but I think it's important to note, the first year the boat didn't actually get on the water until September, as I recall.
It was late in the year. I don't recall if it was September, perhaps August. It did operate, I actually have the numbers here, I can tell you how many days it operated. It was, let me get my glasses on so I can see this. The first year it operated for 59 days. This last summer it operated 93. And the first year the ridership was 1,306.
Okay, those are my only clarifying questions for now, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, what was the feasibility study? What did it basically say was going to be the estimated ridership?
The ridership estimated in the feasibility study for the one-boat system was between 22,000 and 26,000 one-way trips per year.
Based on how many days of operation?
About what it was operated last year, in the 90 range.
Yeah, yeah, I, it doesn't sound like it's kind of working to kind of say we're the rubber meets the road here. And I know that TOT funds are very scarce, so, you know, I think we really need to take a look at this and maybe get to a point where we either fish or cut bait, wait for another type of model to come along, because I'm sure the Resort Association could probably put that, to, that money go into this project to a better, better use, maybe, maybe not.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Duran. Any other board members, before I open up to the public? The question I have is, so, staff's recommendation then is reducing the transportation program budget by the $149,000, moving that money over to the capital maintenance budget. Do you have a specific project to which you would be adding that $149,000 at this point?
Not at this time, and I, let me explain to you a little bit how that works. So when the budget gets set by the board, there is a single line item for capital projects, and the Resort Association has a call-for-project system that was initiated this last year, and there would be a call-for-projects stating that that amount of money is available for allocation. So the transportation budget is funded with, really with additional funds from the infrastructure capital projects budget, so rather than that funding getting transferred over to transportation, it would just remain in that single line item and be available for the call-for-projects. Last year, the call-for-projects, the response was about $3 million in projects, and the allocation for the first year was $1.5 million. So there's certainly a lot of interest in projects being developed.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, members of the public who wish to address the board on this item, I suspect we have some interest by some folks that are sitting there. Good afternoon, Mr. Morolatos.
Good morning.
Afternoon.
Or afternoon, Chairman Ulller, members of the board. My name is Alex Morolatos, I'm a resident of Tahoe Vista. I own the Morolatos Lakeshore Resort, and I was on the Resort Association Board at the time that this pilot project was brought forward for consideration by the Infrastructure Committee. I think staff has pointed out excellently with a lot of good data, a financial concern for the board to consider, but I would ask you to step back, and if we were to put that list of transportation projects up on the board and look at the master plan that's guided the decisions made and recommendations made by the Resort Association to this board, we have always stepped on ground that the public sector can't by taking innovative, aggressive moves and making investments to improve North Lake Tahoe as a destination resort. This morning, you heard evidence in that, public art, a reason for people to come and visit and enjoy and have an experience in North Lake Tahoe. Bike trail systems, infrastructure costing $70 million in the next few years to improve the visitor experience. This Water Shuttle, in concert with night rider and the transportation to the airport, are all elements on a gradient scale. Some very efficient, like TART ridership in terms of cost, but others on the end of the scale that are seeking to establish North Lake Tahoe as a destination resort, are expensive. So I think you have a tough choice. Do we continue to invest in innovative solutions that create draw to the region? Or do we, because we are trying to be conservative, rightfully so, not pursue those types of initiatives? I submit to you that if we walk away from this pilot this year, we will do damage to our reputation as a transportation innovative community. So I beg you to hopefully give direction to staff to come back with a more fine-tuned financial solution that possibly could reduce the amount of funding, but allow us to continue the experiment. And one final note, like all pilots, you are subject to all kinds of conditions that affect the outcome. Tahoe Vista's inability to dredge, the lack of a pier in Kings Beach, let's look at a pilot's purpose. It is to test infrastructure, is to test collaboration, and I submit that instead of retracting, we have the Army Corps of Engineer here today, we, TRPA is here today, the districts that are involved in infrastructure elements that would lead to an improved water system are here today. Instead of cutting funding for this pilot, I submit that we ask tougher questions on how we can ensure that this pilot serve Tahoe Vista and Kings Beach, and we will improve ridership, and we will create a huge competitive assets, asset that separates North Lake Tahoe from other destinations in the West Coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Chubus?
One of the greatest challenges in my life to try to say this in three minutes, say anything in three minutes, I guess is a challenge for me. anything in three minutes, I guess is a challenge for me. Welcome and thanks for taking this on. And as you know, and was related-
Your name for the record, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. My name is Ron Trebus. I work with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I do advise the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association Board and what we call the Capital Investment Transportation Committee on issues that need to be brought forward. Jennifer and I worked very closely and I'm not sure we ever brought an item forward where we were presenting some different facts or just additional ones to the ones that she did, which have a lot of merit. I just think there was additional points that need to be made on the value of this water shuttle system. Both the board and the committee did vote to bring this forward. As Jennifer said, at first the committee had some concerns, rightly so. And so what we did in that month's time is we went back and addressed all of those and brought forward, suggested changes, solutions, which were then accepted on all but one vote from the committee and then went on to the Board of Directors, which was the same type of a vote. The project itself started off with a $170,000 request and that was reduced to 149 through some actions like fare increase, which was one of the things that our voter surveys responded to that said, this is really extremely cheap and we would pay more to ride this. And so we are proposing to take that fare from about $10 to $1,350 average. And that was one of the reasons why the comments that Jennifer made about 5% increase in ridership was a minimum 5% increase. And that was because of that increase in fare as a, being conservative on that in the first year of that increase. The same with the reduction of $20,000 each year in TOT was a minimum of $20,000. And that's based on the addition too of other outside funding. And we did prepare a chart that I hope you've all seen. And if you haven't, that is included in this two-page. That shows over an eight-year period how this, this project can go from this extremely high cost per rider down to approximately a dollar and a half over eight years between the existing proposed fare increases, the increase of that minimum 5% ridership, the addition of outside forces, which are outside funding, which are being pursued through the Placer County Clean Air Grant and they're going to help us with next year now that they're listening to transit service proposals in that grant process. The Tahoe Transportation District's 5311 program is looking for next year's funding to come in here. Senator Gaines is SB 231, now is referring to water transportation as a consideration in the state funding that will be added to the possibility for state programs. I have a lot of points of other changes that have been made and the reasons that this will be very beneficial to continuing in the pursuit of a transportation vision. And that is included in the TRPA's plan, TTD's plan, the county area plans, the resort association county's tourism plan, all refers to water shuttle and water transportation additions to the Lake Tahoe visitor experience, for which I think was mentioned by someone yesterday, is something we really have to look at in our budgeting as to how do we look at some projects based on visitors' needs and desires that are somewhat flexible and somewhat do change from year to year. So I think, I would hope that you will consider, as Peter Kratz said, sometimes a third of a mile of a bike trail can motivate greater pursuit towards a vision of the regional transportation triangle bike trail system. So without going through all these points, I would just really like to encourage you to take another year with these considerations of if we don't hit a minimum of 5%, if we don't hit a minimum reduction of $20,000, that that would be the decision for whether to continue this, this program anymore. There is just enough things happening between Kings Beach Pier being looked at, the JMA program in Homewood, which is going to be using transportation and other, other water-related projects, that it would be, I think, really a wrong thing to, to end it now and then try to get this started again. Thanks and thanks for letting me go over.
Thank you, Ron. Supervisor Montgomery has a question or comment, Ron.
Yeah, Ron, before you go, thank you for this information. I'm trying to quickly comprehend this chart.
Yeah.
A couple of quick questions on this. Across the top, you mentioned additional funding sources at $10,000, $20,000, and $50,000. Where do you envision those funding sources coming from?
And that's what I was mentioning, some of the funding applications that are already advancing through TTD and the Placer County Clean Air Act that we're looking at. And then, one of the comments, again, that was mentioned, was the addition of some marketing money to this of a 10,000 or 15,000, and that might even be able to happen this year, which, just to clarify what Jennifer said, that didn't bring this down to 149. That would be bringing it down further from 149 if that was, if that was brought forward.
Right, but it's still TOT money. It's just from a different pot.
That's, yeah, that's right. It's a different pot if you look at TOT in different pots, just like the transportation. Some people had said, you shouldn't use transportation funds for this. Well, they're not transportation funds. They're TOT or infrastructure funds of which can be flexibly moved to transportation if we do. Yeah, the TOT is one big utter-
And that's only my point. I realize they can be moved within areas, but it's, it's, it's one pie. You can be sliced different ways. That's my point. On, on the projected seasonal ridership, I note that by 2023, you're still at less than half what the estimated annual ridership was intended to be?
I'll address that briefly. The conceptual development feasibility study, which was referred to, was a study that we had done before we ever went out for, with an RAP or set up the actual program. It was to see what the feasibility would be for this type of thing. It did, it came up with figures. It came up with one-boat, two-boat figures, all larger than the boat we're using. And as I show on this sheet here, the reality of the maximum figures or passengers that you could have are 23,000 for a one-boat system, the maximum. And in order to come up with the figures on here, I reduced that to what it would take to get to half of that for a realistic figure. And then what would that do across there? And as you can see, it comes out somewhere in the, between, in eight years, $1.60 down to actually a $1.77 profit, depending on other sources that come in and participate in that. The, as I said, this was a feasibility study, much like we did for the North Lake Tahoe Express before we decided whether to do it. And then we went out and it ended that we were using a 12-passenger boat that holds 10, 10 bicycles, 10 paddleboards to combine those recreational experiences instead of the bigger boat, not much bigger, but bigger boat that was used here between 15, or 14 and 20 passengers.
And, and believe me, I was-
That's way too much weeds for-
Actively, no, no. I was actively engaged in those conversations and worked with John Schuff and, you know, with others to bring this proposal to the board because it was definitely thinking outside the box at the time. And so I've been and continue to be an advocate for waterborne transportation. But as I tell everybody, whatever the topic is, part of our responsibility as a board is to say, is this the best use, understanding that there are more than just economic questions to this? Is it the best use of taxpayer dollars? And so not picking a fight, just really trying to understand the metrics and understand, you know, what are we really hoping to achieve in what timeframe and at what cost? I think I'm gonna leave it at that for now.
Okay. And again, I realize your responsibility and I just want to bring forward what I think some of the other advantages are to doing this. I find that particularly when it's kind of a carte blanche thing of, oh, I'm sure there's better uses for the money, which I did not hear you say, but I, I've heard that said, that I think with any one of these projects that we recommend, we could do that, whether it was a public art, whether it was other transportation systems, whether it's completing a section of a bike trail, is there a better way we could have used the money? You know, and that's pretty wide open.
Supervisor, Ron, again, has a question.
Yeah, Ron, a couple of questions. Air pollution is one of my committee assignments. So could you walk me through a little bit why you think you'd be better positioned this next year for a grant application with APCD?
Just because our, we turned one in in about three days this year and the person, and I don't remember her name, told us that there was other projects, they were going to consider transits programs this year. And it turned out that it was all transportation infrastructure that got the ones. They didn't do any transit. And that she said that she believed this was a valid type of project and she would be glad to sit down with us and work through the application this year.
Yeah, she actually, by the way, gets really high marks for the help that she does provide applicants, so she would be really willing to help. The basis for measuring the grants in a competitive environment is the amount of reduction the grant will create in, in air emissions. And it actually boils down to the, the benefit of air quality improvement for the dollar. So I get, I'm looking for, for some reasons.
Yeah. And again, in the feasibility study, which as I said, was based on a little different type of transportation and that, it, it said that with what we're doing right now, there's approximately 500, 500 vehicle miles that are saved a day on the potential of this ridership as it goes up. And again, the ridership that they said, even though it's higher than this boat would do, was not for the first year. That's what the program could get to. There is, in that same thing, some figures on emissions that, I was just now trying to find it and couldn't find it real quick.
Okay. And so then, just if you could give me, the concept, it's a great concept. I think board was enthusiastic about it. Problem I'm having, and I'm looking for help, is that, you know, just fell so dramatically short of expectations, I guess, if you assume the numbers in the pilot were our expectations. They were along the line of what I was hoping for at any rate. So now, I appreciate the work you've done. I like the spreadsheet. I like the strategy that's in it. But if we were to fund it for just another year, by the measurements that you have, your increment of improvement is so small in the early years, frankly, it's going to be hard for me to know next year if you achieve the targets here, whether or not the pilot is still feasible currently. I would argue that the pilot appears to not be feasible, but it almost like it takes eight years to have the strategy take effect. And so then the question to the board is, you know, are we really considering an eight additional year pilot project and the costs associated with that? Because then when you run those numbers, the alternative investment opportunities are huge. So it just, I'm looking for-
Okay. And I totally understand that again. And this was done on a very conservative basis, even looking at the fact that last year when we gained 10% in ridership, we were without the second most used dock because of the Tahoe Vista water shortage that we had in the first, in the first two year and a half. So I think we're way beyond capable of ridership going up more, the availability of outside funding coming in, the development of the JMA project, starting of which they're then going to participate in a water shuttle system. I just, I think this is very conservative and I could make it, you know, much more so, but I would rather be realistic for what is going on right now. The number of docks, which is down one, and we not only will gain another one, but Sunnyside is near coming into this picture too as another one. I would, I would really see that within that eight-year period, this program could change more to where it's multiple boats. But again, it's to go from a year to year. I want to give a realistic figure on what would be a cutoff if, if we don't show at least that minimum improvement in this program.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, and, and I wanted to get back, and this, and by no means am I trying to get you in a trap or something. I just don't remember, when did we pass this and implement this?
2012.
2012, okay. At the time that, I'm assuming that a presentation was made with regards to the feasibility study. Well, first of all, who prepared the feasibility study?
LSC transportation planning.
Okay. So it was, it was, I'm assuming that they obviously know what they're doing.
Wasn't me.
Okay, yeah. The second thing is, is that you had made some comments with regards to the specificity and that in the way it was implemented, it wasn't exactly how it was discussed in the feasibility study. Was that information provided to us at the time that we made the?
We had a full, yeah, we had a full application, yeah.
Okay. All right. And with respect to that, you know, I'm kind of feeling the same way Robert is, you know. All of us are pretty much, I mean, look, we've got library issues that we've got to deal with. We've got fire that we've got to deal with. And those are pots that we have to find things with. And all, all I'm saying is that, you know, your TOT, you use that the way that you most prudently can. And it seems to me that when people come up to Tahoe, and maybe this is just an overgeneralization because I don't live here, is that they're coming up here for specific destination things, all right? I have never personally heard, and this is not a slight on anybody, I've never personally heard anybody coming up to ride a water shuttle. I, I just haven't. So it seems to me that this, at this particular point, it's more of a want than an actual need. If you had to, to put the money towards that section of, of trail that we were just talking about, it seems to me that that would be something that would be more used than the water shuttle. I'm just giving you guys food for thought here as to what my thought process is and how I'm going to be looking at this, you know, as we move forward, so.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Trebus while we got him pinned down here? No? All right. Thank you very much, Ron. I do have a question for Jennifer and that is, so we counted 3,165 one-way passenger trips last year. Do we have that broken down by utilization on day of the week? Do we know if Saturday and Sunday were three times as high as Tuesday and Wednesday? In other words, is there a way we can drive cost out of this by knocking it down from a seven-day-a-week operation, maximizing the fair capture on those days where it's more heavily utilized and, and not give up the program entirely along those lines?
We do have that data. I can't tell you that I have it off the top of my head. The Transportation Management Association, which monitors and manages the program day to day, including the reservation system, would be able to pull that out of their system. Jamie Wright is here from the TMA Today. I'm not sure if she has that with her. I, I would guess there could be some cost savings, but I do know that the operator, if we weren't going to be providing the services here, was going to take the boat elsewhere. So I'm going to guess it's a business decision for the operator if he's going to be receiving less revenue, he may or may not want to have the boat available to provide the service. And I, I don't know that I can answer that question.
Okay. All right. I certainly think it's worth looking at if, I mean, if we're capturing 65 to 75% of our revenue in just two or three days, is it, is it feasible, you know, to reduce? Mr. Morolatos, just hop back up real quick and-
Yeah. And especially with Supervisor Duran's comments, I'm gonna concede that, that this may not be an appropriate use of funds if we can't get a return. However, again, if, I want to point out that, and this is also for your edification, this, this whole route was intended to create connections to existing transportation, bike routes, bus routes. Every, every waypoint was aligned with that in order to facilitate people getting out of their car and using alternative forms of transportation. So it was fully integrated. The assumption was that it would hit all these different locations from Kings Beach all the way down to the West Shore. To date, it started late on the first year and we've had three- To date, it started late on the first year, and we've had three years of straight drought that has killed two of the waypoints. So it has some real physical constraints that have prevented the pilot from achieving what we intended it to achieve, to integrate this new service into the existing services, as well as to develop the marketing collateral and collaboration between the tourist operators, so that we could promote the use of the shuttle as an amenity on our properties. We have not been given that opportunity because of the reduced number of waypoints and the reduced season on the first year. All that said, we have a drought, maybe we have an out. So if we're going to not fund this, if you're considering that, then I appeal to you to let's use the intelligence we've gained, and I do believe, especially if you believe that we're going to make a Kings Beach pier improvement, that we will have improved infrastructure, that a pilot like this, an actual service like this, could be successful, could be profitable. And I, one point, and I'm not sure all the details that staff went through and how much the Resort Association looked into this, but even looking at the program as it sits today, the intent was to get private industry to invest in advertising on the boat and to subsidize this, and I would submit that that, and I think that's what Ron was alluding to with Homewood, but also others would be willing to contribute in order to keep this going. So if not this year, because we have such a severe drought, we have limited infrastructure to do this, let's keep it alive for a future period, or let's find an innovative way to continue to fund it bare bones until we can get past, have a full lake, and make the infrastructure improvements that improve the service, that's just...
And I do want to respond to Mr. Merrill Otto, so I don't want to make this a debate, all right, I really don't. You know, when, when, part of, part of the job that I do outside of this is to make sure that businesses meet their performance, right? And if they don't meet their performance, we start tinkering with the business, and if the business still doesn't meet performance, we have to make a decision, all right? When I start seeing things like this, and I start hearing things like we've had a drought, those are all the things that I hear all the time when I'm talking to business managers of trying to sustain a program. So, you know, when you get up there and you make those comments, you're not helping, you're not helping me at all, you're losing credibility with me, but I'm willing to work with whatever, whatever you guys want to do. We promised you three years, you know, I'm willing, Kirk had a good idea about, you know, you know, there could be some other ideas about maybe using transit to buy a boat or something and operating it that way, but just...
I think that's what my appeal is.
Just be careful.
Actually, I was appealing to, to what you were saying and acknowledging that that's, that is a reality, but also that this is a broad-based community with a lot of different transportation points, and we are always trying to be innovative, you can expect that from us.
No, I get that, I get it.
I think you've heard it today in spades.
And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Wagon had a question.
And Alex, I don't want to put you on the spot, but could you, I think similarly, I'm looking, I mean, the idea is a great idea, and hopefully it is viable, and, you know, unfortunately, we have a history now that indicates that there are some huge hurdles, so something's wrong, I guess, and could you, what's your comfort level with the marketing that has been done for it? I mean, it seems to me if I was coming up here for vacation, it would be a particular venue that would be a real kick, a tremendous opportunity, I could really see people using it, so do you have any comment, I mean, the notion about untapped private sector contributions to the marketing of it, I could see being, but is there more to the marketing that you could...
Yes, there were a couple of concepts that we did the lessons learned exercise at the end of year one, and one was to do advertising on the boat, so you'd have local people, local businesses funding, providing marketing dollars to subsidize the boat by advertising their services, so Garwoods, you're on the boat, your next stop is Garwoods, get off, and there would talk about a menu or an electronic device on the boat to spur consumption of, you know, these other services. And in Tahoe Vista, for example, where we have 200 beds, 250 beds spread across six different properties, we were all promoting it, I was offering free shuttle tickets to my guests to promote its use. We lost that marketing exercise in Tahoe Vista when we stopped launching on the Tahoe Vista boat launch. I don't think Tahoe City has that capacity, but I also think in the West Shore with Homewood coming online, that's certainly something that they were, I mean, they are investing in a water shuttle program, that's their capital intent, and I think if you look at things like the Biltmore coming in, or what will be Boulder Bay, and other investments that are taking place, you will see a lot more businesses willing to invest and collaborate and support the shuttle. I don't think we really had a whole lot of opportunity in Tahoe Vista on this side of North Lake Tahoe to do that because we didn't have a pier.
Well, one of the things maybe we could all work on is trying to get some commitments from those folks and seeing what those dollars look like and...
Agreed.
Yep, thanks.
Supervisor Holmes, you had some...
Yeah, just your comment about holding off for a year or till the weather increases as far as the lake level and the piers, and we put this program in abeyance, do you have any idea how soon, first of all, what would happen with the boat? And, and what, what would your vision as far as bringing the boat, the shuttle back?
That, if I were still on the Board of Directors of the Resort Association, that's the question I would ask staff, is to come, if the 149 is not acceptable, that we can't fund because of other priorities, what alternatives can we come up with? And that's, so, because to me, the concern is by not funding, we kill the pilot and what we're learning, and that's what I'm more emotional about, is we have a lot more to work and a lot more to do, and, you know, I do think there are mechanisms, I could probably throw out a few, but that's probably the work that should be done. So, so, yeah, if there's a transition, that there ought to be a plan for that transition, if we put it in abeyance or on hold for a year or two until we can study it further, you know, positioning it that way, I think is good, because that gives the business community an opportunity to come forward and say, we want this back.
Well, that'd be my recommendation to the board, to just put it in abeyance for a year and bring it back and see where we're at the next, you know, next season.
Okay, Supervisor Montgomery, I'm sorry, Supervisor Holmes, are you done?
Yes, I am done.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Alex, I wanted to thank you, this, this doesn't require a response from you, but, you know, one of the things you said is, there were a number of unforeseen events that arose, including low lake levels, drought, inability to get to and from particular infrastructure that was really a prerequisite for making the program work, and thinking about Supervisor Holmes' comments, I think his suggestion is a really good one. We may discover that what we see with lake levels is the new normal, and until we are able to do dredging, which is going to take permitting and all kinds of crazy stuff, until we're able to build the new pier here in Kings Beach, we just may be setting ourselves up for failure in terms of creating a robust program that becomes anywhere near self-sustaining. And again, as I say, I was, and continue to be a huge advocate for water transit, but we have to figure out how to make it something that doesn't have as, as large a subsidy as it currently requires. And I think, looking at it and saying, let's put it in abeyance for a year, God willing, we get an amazing winter next, next winter, and we have great lake levels, and we not only can have the water shuttle, but we can have rafting on the Trekkie, which we're not going to have this year. I think Supervisor Holmes is really on the spot on this. I think it also allows the Resort Association and the TMA to take a look at Kirk's suggestion, which is, you know, can we, is there a way to compress the operational hours so that we get a greater return on investment for time invested versus dollars that come back to us? So, again, you don't need to respond to any of that, but you triggered synapses in my brain, thank you.
This is the dialogue I wanted to have versus a funding discussion, it is about what we're trying to do with the water shuttle, so don't want to lose the value and the momentum.
Is this a decision that has to be made today? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chairman, this is a decision that has to be made today? I mean, because obviously, it sounds to me like we've got some additional data that we have to, to take a look at, I certainly would like to see what the ridership is on the weekends, I think that's worthwhile to look at. I don't know if it necessarily, you know, is going to put us in any more of a different position, but what is our timing on this?
The, the Resort Association stated in the staff presentations that the boat owner needs an answer so that he can decide whether he's going to operate his boat at Lake Tahoe or elsewhere. So, you know, I think we're actually kind of pushing the envelope now on making that decision because of the timing it takes, you know, went back to the board two times, and then the time to get on this agenda, you know, I don't know if they would allow a little bit additional time so that we could work out some of those things, but we have been at this since, I think it's been February so far, you know, in earnest discussing it at the committees and board level at the Resort Association.
Thank you.
Chairman Yular, based, based on the comments, the board and...
Before you make any motion, I think I did see one other person stand up, or a couple of people, let's, let's finish up the public comment, and then I think our board has an idea what direction we want to go.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board, my name is Jamie Wright, and I am the Executive Director of the Trekkie North Tahoe Transportation Management Association. Probably have had the opportunity to work closest with this program. I do respectfully understand staff's concerns, but I also respectfully disagree with the recommendation not to fund the water shuttle. The water shuttle would come back this summer in operation just as it did last summer, operating and servicing the same docks. We have looked at water levels, we have talked to dock owners, we do know we would be able to get into all of the current docks we serviced last year. We also are working with the operator in discussing that if for some reason we had to pull the boat off, we would not fulfill full contract obligation to them either. So there is an understanding just based on water level and drought and those types of things, how we can keep the program going this year. My biggest concern to pull the water shuttle off of the lake this year would be to squash the momentum that we've been gaining. The water shuttle did end the season, this past season, the end of our pilot on an upward trend, both in reduced passenger subsidy, ridership, as well as fare box revenues. So pulling it off just kind of goes back to the philosophy of not having good transit services that can be relied on in our destination. The water shuttle is definitely gaining momentum amongst our tourism population. The Yelp account, if you guys look at that, it has all comments on how great it is and what a great thing it makes Lake Tahoe. So unfortunately, at the end of the three-year pilot, given that we started in August year one, it has been hard to market a program that runs three months out of the year and actually get the momentum and get the ridership out there, but I feel like we are really on the cutting edge of accomplishing that, and my biggest concern is if we pull it now, how much more is it going to take us to invest to get us back to where we are today? Are we going to end up investing more money to put something back in the water than we are to continue to look at funding the service, maybe look at grant funding to relieve TOT pressure on our other services that we know we can get a Placer County Clean Air Grant from? I think there's a lot of different things that we can look at. I do know that we came into this year, maybe not with that understanding, we really needed to be diversifying the program and looking at different funding sources. I can tell you that I have worked with the Tahoe Transportation Agent, or the Tahoe Transportation District, as well as the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency in recent months in kind of looking at alternative funding sources. It is something we will continue to work on, but again, our concern is if we don't fund it this summer, what are we, what are we doing next summer, and will it make sense to bring it back? Just a few things that I wanted to point out in regards to our visitation, there was a survey, survey performed on the boat this summer, in which 100% of survey respondents said that the water shuttle made North Tahoe more attractive as a resort destination. 71 of those, 71% of those respondents were visitors to our area. 75% of respondents indicated that they hadn't, if they had not ridden the water shuttle, they would have driven to the same location or a different destination, so we're seeing that those maybe that are riding the water shuttle would not take our public bus at this point. I also feel that the water shuttle highlights our transit system and the multimodal opportunities that we do have here. Also, in that survey result, 41%, or I'm sorry, 40% that were traveling one way returned via bicycle on our bike paths, and 10% on our public transit buses, either Knight Rider or TART. And then, again, it's an economic driver, 38% of the respondents in that same survey said that they were actually taking the shuttle to dine at one of our waterfront restaurant locations. So, in closing, I just hope that you guys reconsider and really consider funding the service for this year. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Were there any other members of the public that wanted to address the board on this item? I see two other folks, all right. Anybody beyond these two gentlemen? If not, we'll go ahead and wrap it after these two gentlemen speak.
Good afternoon, my name is George Fink, I'm the Transsystem Program Manager for Tahoe Transportation District. I'm here today to give our support to the water shuttle program, and also to let you know that we are working with the NLTRA to identify funding sources. I do want you to bear in mind that transportation funding is a long game, so it does take some time to put these things into action and build up the momentum to actually get the transportation funding behind a program like this. It would be unfortunate if by time we were able to do our job, there wasn't a shuttle there to fund anymore. So I would ask for patience in getting this up and running, however, I do also understand the economic realities of that, and be happy to take any questions about what the opportunities are for funding in the future, if you have anything.
I don't see any lights from any board members, thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Steve DeShera, sustainable community advocates, for purposes of full disclosure, I want to mention that I am a consultant to the Trekkie North Tahoe TMA, modestly compensated, but it's really a passion, and I'm also on the board of the Tahoe Transportation District. I think this has been a very good discussion, your staff did a good job of bringing this issue forward for good discussion and contemplation here, and I'm, I'm just wondering, in terms of thinking about additional metrics that you might measure, perhaps it would be, you know, not just funding opportunities in the private sector and the public sector, but also, you know, maybe there's some additional marketing metrics, maybe there's some metrics about other partners that we could identify in writing that are prepared to come along either this year or in the future. So I, I would hope that you would keep the program alive for the coming year and give many of us who have passion for this an opportunity to do the things that you're asking us to do, that, you know, we have a wake-up call now to accelerate our efforts to come up with additional sources of revenue so we can reduce the passenger subsidy, look at additional marketing opportunities, it would be a shame. And I, I believe that the, you know, the boat was built specifically for Tahoe, and obviously, the boat owner is a businessman, and I think if we terminate the program, I don't think he'll bring the boat back, and as was said, I think there'll be, you know, we'll lose the investment that we've made over the last couple of years and the lessons learned. So I understand it's a tough decision for you, but I think it's been a good discussion, appreciate that, and urge you to allow us to continue the program one more year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else, we'll go ahead and, even though we have one more item on this particular agenda item for discussion, since we've had a fairly exhaustive conversation about this particular item, and that is item number 10B2, provide direction in regard to the expenditures of the transit-related dollars, excuse me, transportation for in-budget dollars, and whether or not to include the 149,000. Before we move on to the conversation about the barge, why don't we go ahead and provide staff direction on this item? Supervisor Montgomery and Wagon both have lights lit at this point, we'll go ahead and start with Supervisor Montgomery.
So I, I did have one, just specific question that I had about the timing on this, and I don't know if anyone has an answer to it, but my question is, is if this board gives direction today to basically adopt everything except the water shuttle program, because we definitely have some unanswered questions that we, we would like to understand more fully, does that just preclude this from happening this summer? Or if we hear this item again in three weeks, is that appropriate? I mean, my concern is we're, I feel like we're in this time crunch where we have to make a decision today, and the decision today, I don't feel like I have enough data to make a decision about the value of the water shuttle, and what other opportunities exist to fund it differently, potentially. I, I see you're shaking your head, that if we don't make the decision today, it's basically off the table, it sounds like. today, it's basically off the table, it sounds like.
Um, just on a, a marketing perspective and, uh, a perspective of someone who would need to share this information, and if we are looking to increase ridership, um, it will miss our, our big brochure if we wait. Um, so I caution us on waiting. I also know that the boat owner has been waiting patiently since February for a decision. Uh, they have somebody that would like the boat. Um, so I think they're, they're holding out as long as they possibly can for us, um, because they truly believe in the waterborne transit system and, and where we can take it. Um, but at the same time, they are business people, and they will need to move on, and I think probably sooner than later.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
Supervisor Wygant.
Well, so where I am is, um, trying to balance, um, you know, basically a gut feel based on the data that we have right now, uh, with what would happen if there's some momentum here and we retracted now and lost that momentum, for sure we could plug it back in later. Uh, but the drought thing, you know, there's always gonna be something, I'm thinking, and, and so the question is, do we, do we fund it for another year? What are our expectations? How does that map on to, you know, this eight-year vision, which I think, um, takes us to about where we really need to be to determine whether or not this is viable. Um, if, if we're gonna fund it for another year, if we're gonna continue it for a couple of weeks, if we can do that, I'm not sure exactly what, what that looks like. Um, I'm an Excel addict, Ron, so I'd like to have actually the Excel version of your spreadsheet so I could fool around with the numbers a little bit and get a better gut feel myself personally. I'd also like the data on if last year during the year we had improved ridership as the year moved forward, and if that was also the case in the prior two years, I'd like that, because at least we're pointed in the right direction. Uh, because again, for me, the concept is a great concept that, that fits nicely into the big picture, um, but it has fallen so short of its expectation that trying to overcome that threshold of how much money we're spending and whether or not it's actually gonna pan out and give us a return on our investment and be viable, it is the hard part. So, I'll just leave my comments at that, at this point in time, and hear what my colleagues have to say.
Other board members have any comments, or does anybody wanna make a motion at this point?
No. I'm just gonna say it's unfortunate, um, you know, if somebody can get on the phone and get a couple extra days. I mean, my, I'm leaning in one direction, but there could be some data out there that could, could really make a difference to me. But if I have to vote today, it's gonna, i- i- it's either gonna be a, a vote to suspend it for a year or to put the money elsewhere, you know? So that's, that's kind of, you know, where, where I'm at right now.
And along those lines, I'll just share my thoughts. You know, when, when businesses start, businesses burn money at the start. All start businesses do. Very few folks are cash flow positive day one. The question is, how close to your projections are you? And when we are achieving about 10% of what was projected, what was hoped for, um, then, then hopefully you walk away from that beta test having learned something. And sometimes with the beta test, you can, um, make tweaks as you move along that then put you on a trajectory that gets you closer, uh, to those original estimates. Sometimes with the beta test, you have to say, okay, that was a, that was a swing and a miss completely. And so we gotta just pull the product back and reevaluate the market viability of the product. And right now, uh, I don't see a 10% absorption rate, uh, of what was projected. And, and quite frankly, I, I lend an awful lot of credence to the notion of the diminished number of stops based on the low water level, um, and, and what that then does to the co-marketing opportunities. Um, and, and so maybe it is a function of taking this particular offering off the table while it is still, um, fairly de minimis in terms of its absorption, or before it does have more critical mass, uh, and then you're taking away from a larger number of people at this point and go and figure out what we can learn in terms of, okay, if we have a water level that reaches a certain threshold that allows for a certain number of stops, we anticipate this many more people getting on, getting off. We have the commitments from neighboring businesses in the area. If there are stops, they will support with a marketing budget, um, or, or do other things to encourage ridership along those lines. We have the ability to analyze the number of, of riders on a per-day basis. To say, uh, a four-day-a-week operation, uh, gets us 85% of, of our ridership, um, with 63% of our cost. So, you, you'll, you'll have the opportunity to analyze those particular things as well. So, where, where I am with this is, I believe ultimately, with the right environmental factors and right business buy-in, this can be a successful, um, offering for the commuting public up here. Um, it provides a great way for people who otherwise don't have boats to just be able to get out on the lake and enjoy the amenity. Uh, but for now, with Mother Nature not cooperating, not allowing people to get on the boat, uh, it's a little more difficult. So, I, I'm certainly, um, open to figuring out how we make this more successful in the future, but I think the, the beta test shows us, we gotta pull the product back at this point and, and really analyze it.
Supervisor Montgomery.
I will just, I, I'm not sure if this requires a specific motion for this. It says direction, but I, I think you're actually looking for a specific action and a motion, is that right?
Well, yeah, we're being asked to actually adopt the Transportation Program Budget, the question. No, we're not being asked to adopt the Transportation Program Budget.
No, I apologize for the confusion. So I was just looking for direction. So what we would do with the transportation budget is bring it back with the Resort Association contract prior to July 1.
Okay.
This was just direction to get a feel for, are we gonna go forward with these things or not, so that we knew whether to plan for them and, you know, sign contracts with the operators, et cetera.
Okay, well then, then it would certainly, I think, be worth kind of, uh, an advisory voice vote of the board, just to give an indication to staff definitively, uh, whether the board is, uh, has a majority opinion one way or then, or the other. Um, I've let my thoughts be known in terms of pulling it off the table for, for this year, and possibly, you know, until the, uh, environment, uh, improves to, to sustain this kind of an operation.
Okay, so I will make a motion, and based on what I've heard from the board, um, that we give direction, that we adopt, um, the Resort Association Transportation Program Budget for fiscal year 15, 16, with the exception of the $149,000 for the water shuttle program. Um, but that we also give direction that county staff continue to work with the Resort Association and other private, uh, businesses in the area to, uh, figure out how to more robustly fund this outside TOT dollars when the environmental, uh, conditions approve. Is that close, Chairman Yular?
Yeah, no, it's good. Okay. All right, so we have a motion by Montgomery and a second by Holmes. Um, unless there's further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. None, thank you very much. All right, let's go ahead and take up that last item. Yes, Mr. Trubus, quickly, yes, please.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you. I realize, uh, it was a tug and pull, and, but I do appreciate very much getting direction today because we could, we really can't wait any longer, and I need to be able to, uh, tell, in our previous contract, we needed to let them know in February whether we were gonna use them again. And, but again, I realize it was a tough one. Good points, and at some point, uh, perhaps this can come back, but this was what we needed today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trubus. All right, um, now, item 10B3, uh, the approval of the North Lake Tahoe Transit Oxygen Tax Infrastructure Account Expenditure for repairs to a barge.
Yes, and I will try to move through this one as quickly as possible. Um, as noted here in this slide, the barge was initially purchased with TOT funds for the annual fireworks in Tahoe City, uh, was purchased by the Tahoe City Volunteer Firefighters Association, which used to do the fireworks in the past. It is now owned by the business associations for the same purpose and includes the fireworks in Kings Beach. Um, the barge is in a bit of a, of disrepair. It, it is, um, close to 30 years old. Um, and so it needs $43,000 estimated in repairs in order to utilize it this July for the fireworks celebrations. Um, the $22,000 has been recommended toward that $43,000 by the Resort Association, and, um, this is where it gets a little more complicated. Uh, the Resort Association recommended allocation of that $22,000 from the fiscal year 24, 2014, 15 infrastructure account funds, but 100% of that fund has already been allocated in March by your board to specific other capital projects. As you remember, we brought that entire list, um, based on the annual call for projects process. In order to allocate dollars out of the 14, 15 funds, we'd have to defund one of those approved projects, reallocate funding to the barge project, and then bring back that initial project back to your board for reapproval at a later date. Um, excuse me, kinda lost my spot there. Um, at, at first it agreed to, um, in 2009, 2010, a maintenance reserve account has been set aside in the county treasury to fund expenses associated with maintenance and repair of visitor-serving capital projects. The Resort Association this year recommended that fund only be available for bike trail maintenance. Since the inception of that fund, the only project funds have been allocated to a snow removal on the Squaw Valley Bike Trail and some maintenance of the speed radar feedback signs that you see in some of our downtown communities. And there's currently $286,000 available in that account. And after working with our finance staff and the Resort Association and considering several options to resolve the funding issue, because we do want to support the recommendation of the funding to repair the barge, um, and to ensure that the bar, uh, the repairs to the barge are able to be completed as soon as possible, we're recommending to your board today that the funds be allocated from that maintenance reserve account. Um, and should you direct, the $22,000 could later be refunded to the capital maintenance fund through the Resort Association's 15, 16 contract amendment. Um, happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Part of your, uh, recommendation as well here is that, uh, you're recommending that the grant funding be contingent upon MTBA and the TCDA, both of which use the barge, uh, developing and presenting to the Resort Association a business plan for future management. Um, we still have TCDA here for sure. I, do I see Joy?
Yes, both here.
She's still, okay, sorry, you're hiding behind the, the podium. Um, can, can I get a little feedback from you two on that portion of this recommendation? Is that something that you think is achievable? You wouldn't mind coming forward?
Hi, this is Stacy Lyons from the Tahoe City Downtown Association, and yes, we are currently working with Jim Veelen, who's the General Manager of the Tahoe City Marina, and, and figuring out a way that we can, um, basically make this barge a little bit more sustainable moving forward, um, renting it out, and just different ways that we have, we're gonna grow a reserve account so we can pay for future maintenance for this barge.
As I, as I read this recommendation, it sounds like the recommendation is saying fundraising to actually pay back the $22,000. Is that correct? Am I reading that incorrectly? So it's, it would be future fundraising?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Joy?
Yeah, I was just gonna add that we're, we're looking at every and all possible, um, funding sources, and as a matter of fact, the Tahoe City Marina came forward with a small contribution of $1,000, so we wanna thank them for that. Um, and we are leaving no stone unturned.
Okay, okay. So you would both be, you would both then be amenable to some fundraising for future maintenance costs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by board members? Seeing none, anybody from the public wish to address the board on this item? All right, Mr. Supervisor the Board.
Um, I would suggest, or I, I would move that we actually adopt the staff recommendation on this. To me, it makes sense to use, um, those maintenance dollars, or, uh, yeah, maintenance dollars for, um, for this. It, it, it seems like when we as a board had a conversation about how do we maintain the infrastructure that we built up here, we didn't narrow it down to a specific use, but said, it's for maintenance. So, uh, my suggestion would be we, um, use the, uh, capital maintenance reserve account in the amount of the $22,000 barge repair, and give direction to the, uh, to business associations to work toward the second half of the recommendation, which is, uh, fundraising for the future.
All right, motion Montgomery, second Duran. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, none. Thank you very much. That concludes our open session action items. County Council will take us into closed session now.
Uh, the board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss, um, five items of litigation, um, Abaco versus County Sands versus County Exclusive Resorts versus Placer County Board of Supervisors, and two workers' compensation, uh, claims.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, we've returned from closed session. County Council will report out.
Uh, the board has returned from closed session, uh, where the items of existing litigation listed on the agenda were discussed. In case of Abaco versus County of Placer, the board heard a report from council and gave direction to council. In the case of Nicholas Sands versus Deputy Michael Seifert in the County of Placer, the board authorized the defense and indemnity of Deputy Seifert and, uh, waived the conflict to allow the County Council's office to represent both the County of Placer and Deputy Seifert in the, uh, in the action in U.S. District Court. On Exclusive Resorts versus Placer County Board of Supervisors, the board heard a report from council and gave direction to council. And in the, uh, in a workers' compensation claim of Michael Bennett, the board heard a report from, uh, council and gave direction. And in the workers' compensation claim of John Calgari, the board heard a report from council and gave direction to council. That concludes the closed session report.
And there being no other items for the board to consider at this meeting, we are adjourned until our May 5th meeting. Thank you.